Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to turn to the village administrator for mayoral appointments.
Whereas the village of Southampton has a vacancy in the position of police officer, and whereas Connor Rayner has previously attended and successfully completed the Suffolk County Police Academy, has served another municipality as a police officer, and is eligible to serve Southampton Village as a police officer, whereas Officer Rayner has been interviewed and evaluated for the position, the Southampton Village Police Officer. Now therefore be it resolved that Connor Rayner is appointed as police officer, subject to the successful completion of an agreed-upon probationary period for the position of police officer, and be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to execute any documents to complete such appointment, be it further resolved that Officer Rayner shall be compensated at an annual salary of $104,038.87 effective February 14, 2025, and thereafter in accordance with the IAW Southampton Village PVA contract.
So the mic's on? I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Yes, if I can make some comments. Before addressing this resolution, I want to take a moment to thank the village police department. Their hard work and dedication are instrumental in keeping Southampton Village one of the safest communities on Long Island. To every officer who serves our village with professionalism and commitment, thank you. Your efforts do not go unnoticed, and we are truly grateful. Now turning to this resolution, first and foremost, unfortunately, I cannot vote favorably on this matter. I am unable to make an informed decision because I have not been provided with any details regarding the hiring process, the qualifications of the candidate, or the rationale behind this election. I would be remiss if I did not mention that residents have raised concerns about this hire. Hiring decisions impact the safety and well-being of both our residents and the officers who serve them, and they take that responsibility very seriously. Again, I want to express my appreciation to our police department. I am incredibly proud of the men and women who serve and have full confidence in their ability to keep our community safe. Thank you.
I would just add that the police department is down an officer at this time because of a retirement, and so we are actually not adding to the overall number at this time. We are merely backfilling a position that has been vacant because of the creation of Sergeant Muller's position, which moved him out of officer position, and so this will be filling Mr. Muller's position. So I will-
I would like to make a comment also with respect to this hire. We have all come to trust the judgment of the police chief of this village in many personnel decisions, and I endorse what she recommends.
And I thank the police officer for showing up this evening. Thank you all very much. So at this time, I'll call the vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
All right, you're a new member of the police officer department tomorrow.
Congratulations.
And Mr. Administrator, we have another mayoral appointment.
Mayor Manger appoints and requests a motion from the board of trustees to approve Thomas Rowinsky Sr. to be appointed as a part-time employee in the Parks Department at a rate of $23 per hour, limited to no more than 20 hours per week, effective Friday, April 18, 2025.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I would like to recognize as employee of the month John Flick, who's head of our Parks Department. I don't think John's in the room, but we can clap for him anyway. Hopefully, he's watching at home. So I received a very nice note from Zoe Komitzes about Mr. Flick, and she wanted to congratulate him for the work that he does at the dog park, no matter summer or winter. She said, "In the summer, we have the unbelievably green, healthy lawn for our dogs to play on, and in the cold, wet winter, he arrives with bales of straw and gravel to control the service that our dogs roll and play in. Whenever we have a problem, John responds. He makes it possible for our park to serve the dedicated dog owners who love and need the park. Thank you for John Flick. The village couldn't have a better parks manager." So he will be awarded that, and at this time, we have a board presentation from our auditors, who I think are joining us by Zoom. Do you have that, Sage? This is the firm of PKF O'Connor Davies LLP, and they, again, are the auditors for the village of Southampton, and this is their annual audit discussion.
Just have them raise their hand.
Okay, so if you are on from PKF O'Connor, please raise your hand so that the, again, the technician here can let you on to the Zoom.
I got it.
Got it? And Julie Kudripa, treasurer, is also present. Julie, there you are, so you can come forward if there's anything that you want to add as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that. Hi, everybody. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, board of trustees. Thank you very much for a couple of minutes tonight to present the results of the May 31, 2024 audit. For purposes of the record, my name is Jeff DeBoli. I'm the audit partner of PKF O'Connor Davies, and we have with us tonight my associate, Mrs. Jennifer Clark. So without further delay, I will get into the presentation, and I promise it will be short and to the point.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Audit status, we are done with the audit. There is just a couple of cleanup items to go before we issue our report. This report has been reviewed in detail with the Budget and Finance Committee, including any management letter comments, and have approved the issuance of this report. This is a bit perfunctory, but I will go through it relatively quickly. This is our responsibilities. These are outlined in our GATE each letter, signed with the village, forming and expressing their opinion on the financial statements, planning, performing the audit in accordance with professional standards, considering internal control for purposes of determining audit procedures, accumulating misstatements identified, if any, during the audit, conducting the audit with professional skepticism, evaluating the presentation of supplemental information in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole, communicating significant matters related to the audit that are in our professional judgment, relevant to those charged with governance, which is this committee, identifying all risks, significant risks, significant deficiencies, material weaknesses identified during the audit. We have an exhibit to go through those, should you require such. Identify any fraud or illegal acts that are noted during the audit. Even though our audit is not designed to detect fraud or illegal acts, if we come across those type of transactions, we are required by the standards to report them to you, and the process used by management to formulate particularly sensitive accounting estimates and our conclusions about those. Management, your responsibilities are selecting and using appropriate accounting policies, fairly presenting the financial statements in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles, establishing and maintaining effective internal controls, complying with laws, regs, and provisions of contracts and grant agreements, and making sure that we, as auditors, are provided all financial records related to the audit. And then, of course, everybody loves a board that has a proper tone at the top and maintains and encourages a culture of honesty and high ethical standards. Those charged with governance, which is this committee, communicating with the auditors and overseeing the financial reporting process. These are just some of what we consider to significant audit areas. Government-wide distant financial highlights, government-wide financial statements show an increase in net position of nearly $9 million. That $9 million increase is the increase, as I said, in net position. Net position is broken down into various components. For the village, overall net position is a deficit of $26.1 million, and various components is restrictions of 9.3, investments in the capital asset and related debt of 34.9, and an unrestricted net deficit of $70 million.
Sage-
You spent a lot of-
Sorry, we just lost the screen here.
Lost the screen? Lost my screen?
Sage is working on it.
Oh, okay, on your side, okay.
You're back.
Okay, good. Thank you. We talked in great detail in the Budget and Finance Committee about these balances, specifically as it relates to deficits, because people don't like the word deficit. In a government, specifically as it relates to the statement of net position, which is the full accrual balance sheet of the village, including all assets and all liabilities, as you see there, the unrestricted net deficit is $70.4 million. The reason for that deficit is largely due to long-term liabilities that are reported in that statement of net position. Specifically, there is approximately $50 million in OPEB liabilities. I know we have spoken in great detail in Budget and Finance, and also at this board, about those OPEB liabilities, and $12.6 million in bonded debt. So those items, since you don't run the fund, you don't run the general fund on a full accrual basis, you run it on a, what's called a modified accrual basis, that limits the amount of money that you can raise to pay for taxes for that particular year. So even though it says deficit, I'm here to report that there's nothing concerning about that. If there was a deficit in the operating funds, on the modified accrual basis, we'd be probably having a different discussion. Here is changes in fund balance. This is, again, on the fund balance. This is the modified accrual basis. Fund balance is broken out between various components, non-spendable, restricted, assigned, and unassigned, and on the left-hand side, you see fund balance increase/decrease for the year, and you'll notice that the general fund decreased by roughly 5% or $1.4 million. And I think it's important to point out to you as a board and constituencies that the general fund actually had an increase of $6.4 million in 2024. That's what we call an operating surplus, which means the revenue and the expenses. The board made a decision, in my opinion, a very good one, to transfer money from the general fund, based on that operating profit, to the capital projects, mostly to the capital projects, to fund capital projects that are coming down in the future. We are no longer living in a time when cash is yielding zero and bonds are free, so it was prudent, outside the scope of the audit, but in my opinion, it was a prudent move to move roughly $7 million from the general fund into the capital projects fund, and there was a schedule in the back of the financial statements disclosing those projects. And anybody can stop me at any time, otherwise I will plow through. Some budgetary highlights, general fund, of course, is the main operating fund of the village, and revenues and other financing sources exceeded budget for May 31, 2024 year by roughly $6 million, and the expenditures and other financing uses were under budget by $273,000. So net result of that, plus a positive variance in the other financing sources and uses, resulted in a $6.2 million positive variance with the budget. That's all positive. We talked about in prior years, this percentage, this percentage is the percentage of the unassigned fund balance, what we call, in our world, free fund balance or available fund balance, of $13 million divided by the ensuing year, the 2025 fund budget expenditures, and that comes to roughly $36.2 million. I feel, again, a little bit off topic from the audit, but I feel that that's, and we spoke about this in great detail in the Budget and Finance Committee, I feel that that is a very healthy and safe level of fund balance. This is what we talked about, what I talked about before with the actual results. This is what actually happened during the year. This was the final budget, encompasses that are carried over from one year to the next, and this is the variance. This is the 6.2 I referred to before. This is the $6.4 million operating surplus that I referred to before, and here is the transfer to fund, largely to fund those capital projects. So that resulted in a decrease in fund balance for the general fund, but in my opinion, it was a very logical move to transfer that fund balance from the operating fund to the capital projects fund to fund these future endeavors. These are, you know, I've gone over these last, just so I will fly through these. Our responsibilities under professional standards and plans to go until I'm in the audit. You know, as I said, we communicated our required plan in the engagement letter that is dated January 24, 2024. Qualitative aspects of accounting principles broken into various categories. Accounting policies, important to note here, that we noted no transactions entered into the village during the year for which there was a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. All significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statement in the proper period. Significant and unusual transactions, no matters of company attention that I require to point out to you today. Accounting estimates and management's judgments, these are a large part of a current-day municipal financial statement. These are the major items of cost estimates. Anything in a financial statement requires estimates, whether it be depreciation, which is the useful life of assets, or medical inflation and discount rates for the calculation of post-employment benefits. So these are what we consider the major items that contain accounting estimates. Management believes that the estimates used and assumptions made are adequate based on the information, and we have reviewed those factors and key assumptions, and we agree with those determinations. Financial statement disclosures, because of the volume and the size of certain liabilities, these were what we considered important financial statement disclosures. Mention information, OPEB, outstanding bonds, which does roughly less than $13 million in bonds, which is a very healthy level of balance for a village this size, and fund balance, which we already determined was a healthy level of free or available fund balance. We incurred, we encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management during the performance of the audit, and the significant risks that we identified were management overrides and internal controls and proper revenue recognition, financial statement presentation and disclosures, and these are standard risks that are identified as unique to the village, but also assumed in the standards, our auditing standards. As I said, we had no disagreements with management during the conduct of our audit. We require a management representation letter, which will be issued, I assume, tomorrow. There is a required disclosure regarding consultations with other accounts, and what that means is that you have not opinion chopped on a sensitive accounting or auditing matter with another accounting firm. Opinion chopping would be something that would be required to make a comment on. And there were no matters discussed or responses. There, too, were, that were a condition to our retention as village auditors. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements were required to disclose to you there. We are required to communicate to you all material corrected misstatements that were brought to the attention of management as a result of our over procedures, and I'm happy to report that none of those misstatements identified by us and correctly by management or materials, either individually or in the aggregate, based on the financial statements taken as a whole. These are, and we don't have to go through these, for the general board's purpose, we have gone through these in great detail with Budget and Finance and the mayor, and as an auditor, I'm very, very happy to see that our comments aren't taken seriously about certain items, and I know the mayor has taken certain of these comments by the horns and has charged others, specifically the firm administrator, with straightening out some of these comments. So unless the board wants to go through these, I will go look through them there. Generally, routine-type comments, and as I said, with the Budget and Finance Committee, we have gone through great detail on those comments. This is the manager of rep letter that we will ask management to sign prior to the issuance of the financial statements. It reads, "Illife War Peace," but that's where we are. There are a couple of things coming down the pike for the next fiscal year for the village. Gatsby 99, I don't see this having a big issue for this particular village, accounting changes and error corrections. This is just a clarification to a prior Gatsby Statement Number 62, which talks about accounting changes and error corrections, and this just provides more understandable, readable, reliable, and relevant comparable information when making decisions about assessing accountability. And the biggest one is Gatsby Statement 101, compensated absence, and that will be effective for this village for the subsequent year, the May 31, 2025 audit.
Jeff, can you describe that last one and what that will require us to do differently?
Yes, so the, you know, Jen, maybe you want to pop in here?
Hi. So compensated absences is a liability that you're already reporting on the book. This standard just requires you to consider in that liability calculation, any paid time off that you expect employees to use as opposed to be paid out for upon retirement as also included in the liability. So you'll probably have to do some kind of an analysis to see what percentage of those days people are using right before they retire and include them in your liability calculation.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we, as municipal accounts and auditors, we do a fair amount of reading on these things, and we have opportunities to give our opinion when they are in ED's point. So they look to us for comments about kicking the tires on some of these things before they are actually issued, and we have written significant amount of white papers on Gaspys over the years. Jen has taught Gatsby 103, which is another year after, which we don't need to bog down today's meeting with, but it has to do with clarification and upping the sophistication of the management discussion and analysis. So with that, I will turn it over to the mayor and to the board for any questions.
Thank you very much, Jeff. I'll ask, you know, we had a discussion already, Jeff, so I'll turn it over to the board members here if they have any questions at this time. Ed? Len?
No, I think, thank you, Jeff and Jen, and thank you, Julie, for all your hard work on this process.
Robin Roy? Okay, at this time, Sage, we may have Ed Moneypenny, the chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, also on Zoom. You might, I'll ask him to raise his hand if he wants to come in and say something. That's not Ed. We've got two, two of the same guy. Don't we?
Yeah, three.
Yeah. Ed, you're live.
Look, it wasn't that easy.
We're glad you're here.
Okay, well, I don't have much. You've seen a lot of the material that we went over. We went over a little more detail than you would expect the committee to do, and the committee was pleased with the amount of work put into this report. And we had a good Q and A, as you know, mayor, and we recommended unanimously that this report be accepted by the village trustees for the year in question.
Okay, thank you very much, Ed. Appreciate it. All right, well, I think that will end this presentation, unless, Julie, you had anything you wanted to add? The treasurer's going to add maybe something.
I just want to thank Jeff DeBoli and Jen Clark and the Budget and Finance Committee. Thanks for all your help, so.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd also like, before I get shut down here, I'd like to thank the mayor and the board of trustees, the Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Russell and Ms. Grudow, and Jen Clark, obviously, for an effective and efficient audit, and it is a pleasure and an honor to work with this board.
Thank you very much, Jeff. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open a public hearing. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing on local law number one, 2025, a local law many chapter 99 taxation to provide a tax exemption for historic properties as authorized by section 444-A of the New York Real Property Tax Law. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Scott, I was going to maybe ask you, as someone who used to do assessments and implemented this in the township of Southold, where you were supervisor for 18 years, to maybe explain what this is.
The local law that's proposed would actually phase in taxes on any improvement that's made to a historic structure, and that is whether it's within a historic district or anywhere else within the village. It phases in taxes for any improvements that are made specific to the restoration or the improvement of the historic integrity of the structure. It is not an exemption that would extend over to other improvements or to anything, any work that's done on the house, which would be maintenance and building permits, et cetera, but only the improvements that are specific, and also improvements that have been approved by the Historic Preservation Commission.
Eileen, would you like to add anything?
No.
Okay, so-
Summary. It's also, you know, a statute that's authorized. There's an enabling statute in New York State-
New York City law.
-real property law, and we've essentially just adopted the state legislation.
Right, and they have this already in the township of Southampton-
They have it.
...as well as the village of East Hampton and-
Yes.
...Southold, as I mentioned.
That has it.
All right, but we'll open this up to the public, anyone that would like to come forward. I also know there was some correspondence that was sent to the board concerning this matter, so those will be entered into the record for this public hearing.
Maybe Scott could do that now, just read them so we- Maybe Scott could do that now, just read them so we know which letters are in the record.
Yeah, I'll just ask you to bear with me because I have a lot of correspondence that's sort of altogether, it's not necessarily segregated into each item that's to be discussed tonight. However, we have Mrs. Ms. Weinstein, who has issued a letter in opposition to the adoption of the tax exemptions for historic properties. That is based on the, what she says is the shift of tax benefit to other properties. We have Kenneth Weinstein, I'm sorry, I'll wait for the tree for that. This is the.
Scott, I think they're, actually, they're outlined on the agenda.
Yes, but it doesn't specify whether it's for or against, so I'll just read the reference, I'll just reference the names. Correspondence from Ken and Merle Weinstein, Dennis Hurley, Valerie Acera, Robert and Laurie Naveeney, Mitch Fowler, residents of Armon Cooper, Halsey, Henry S T S, and Moses Lane, and from David Hart and Dale Daly.
Okay, so at this time, we'll open up to the public, anyone wishing to come forward. Do we have anyone signed up already?
We have actually several people signed up, but there's no indication as to whether they're signed up for this particular.
All right, well, anyone that would like to speak on the, again, proposed local law number one on taxation, please come forward. Mr. Rung?
David Rung, Pleasant Lane. I am vehemently opposed to exempting historical property improvements from village taxation. The village already has a system which undertaxes high-value property and overtaxes low-value properties. And now you want to compound this issue. As I have noted a number of times, some residents of Hillcrest pay three times the village taxes in relation to value as some residents from the estate section. This is disgraceful and something we all should be ashamed of. This proposal will make this situation even worse. Every resident who has a village assessed value of more than .003 of its market value is being overtaxed. The village system is stealing money out of your pockets and giving it to the wealthy. You can correct this situation by filing a grievance. I have a sample of nine recently sold high-value properties which have assessed values that are .003 of their fair market value. You need to file a grievance and demand to be treated the same as these high-valued properties. The grievance filing date is next Tuesday, February 18. The form, which is not difficult to complete, is on the village website under the tax receiver portal. If you need help, I will be happy to provide it free. But today, this village needs to stop the additional fleecing of ordinary residents to pay the greed of wealthy benefactors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Studenroth, do you want to speak at this time?
Yes, indeed.
So maybe just also introduce yourself.
Sure, my name is Zach Studenroth, and I serve as a consultant to your Architectural Review Board when requested. My pleasure to do that. I think it's important for trustees, as well as all the residents, to know that you are a certified local government, which is a status in the Historic Preservation Community that requires that the village meet certain objectives and criteria in terms of best practices within the field of historic preservation. What that means is that your code meets the standards of the State Preservation Office, and annual reports need to be filed to indicate how the board has been, the Architectural Review Board, has been conducting the business in accordance with the code. And I bring all that up because in that report, which those of us who do this is filed annually, there is a specific reference to whether or not the municipality, the village, offers any tax incentives and references made to Tax Law 444A, which your proposed tax references, tax incentive, I should say. So while the State Historic Preservation Office cannot advocate for municipalities to pass this sort of legislation, they make specific reference to it in their annual reporting to see if you've done that. And this is an indication to me of great encouragement because ultimately, the State Historic Preservation Office and our own Architectural Review Board are looking to encourage homeowners to make appropriate improvements, repairs, restoration, et cetera, all of which is being governed by the Architectural Review Board. So as to the standards that are met, this is all covered locally with your own review process. So this is a good thing, basically. And I suppose, once passed, it will be promoted or advertised in a way that will directly or indirectly encourage others to consider making appropriate restoration and improvement to their historic properties. So I think ultimately, this is a very, very positive move. And since I do, I consult with other boards, yours is probably the first. The program that the town offers is actually a very modest grant program that compensates people who decide to make improvements in their homes. But it's quite modest, but worthy. To my knowledge, yours is really the only tax incentive law that would be passed.
I think the Village of East Hampton has it though, because I was just looking at.
Have they?
I just was looking at their law.
Okay, well, good for them.
Yeah.
Well, that's East Hampton, and we're in South.
I know, I get it, thank you, thank you, David.
So I'm very pleased that you're planning to do this.
Okay, thank you. Do we have other people that would like to speak on this?
Yes.
Sheila Pfeiffer, come forward.
Can I just ask a question? Sorry, I should. Sheila Pfeiffer, 56 Hildreth Street. And I apologize ahead of time, I did not read this law because I didn't have an opinion about it. But now that I heard the description from Scott, I'm just curious about what the definition of an historic home that's not in the historic district would be? Like, how is that defined?
Yeah, actually, properties that have to be designated as historic, there can be several criteria on what makes them historic, not necessarily just age. What you would do in order to get a historic designation, you would apply to what's called SHIPO, which is the State Office of Historic Preservation. You would also come back and if you believe you should qualify for historic designation, you should reach out and sit down with the Historic Preservation Commission, the local one here, and discuss your particular property to see if they meet standards that were created.
In addition to that, though, the law would require that the property is located, either located in or contributes to the character of a designated historic district, so. So that would be the definition, contribute to the historic. No, it doesn't.
All right.
It's not contradictory.
All right, all right, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Oh, you have someone on Zoom? Okay, please, Sage, thank you. Okay.
Am I on?
Yes, you're on, Michael.
Hi, thank you, good evening, Mayor Vanger and trustees. I guess I have two questions about this. One was, is there evidence that there are many properties that are historic or in the historic district today where significant repairs and processes are not being undertaken? And that therefore, you know, without, but for this tax benefit, people are not making these kinds of restorations? Because it strikes me on its face that a lot of the people whose homes may fall into this category, you know, may well be in a position to finance those on their own. And so I'm just wondering, A, you know, how important this incentive really is? Is this a problem that is prevalent in the village? And secondly, is it possible to accomplish this resolve by providing a partial benefit? So that people have a skin in the games? I understand the law, it always explained to me this proposed law. It would provide a 100% tax benefit for those improvements?
That's not correct.
Okay, so, yeah, correct me.
So there's actually a schedule. For five years, the assessed value does not increase. And then after that, there's a sliding scale where it does increase.
So for five years, it's a complete offset to their other tax?
No, 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 they pay what they've always been paying, basically, for their house. They just will not have it reassessed based on, for example, the foundation work they do or whatever they might do to maintain the historical integrity of the home.
I see, so the assessment would not increase even if they've done improvements on it, otherwise?
Well, only those that are based on historical preservation and the structural integrity of the home. For example, if someone puts a new kitchen in, that does not qualify. So their assessment will go up based on them pulling a building permit and putting in a new kitchen. This is just only for, really, the exterior of the house that they are maintaining the structural integrity of the historic home.
And Mayor, are there lots of examples of people who are not doing that now?
I actually did have one person call me and tell me they were very happy about this because they've been putting off doing some foundation work that they need to do.
Okay, one, okay. And has it been considered?
We have another woman here who just raised her hand in the audience.
Well, I'm sure people would find attractive once it's in place. I guess the question is whether they need it.
Well, there are homes also on, there are homes, though, that are on North Main Street, Bowden Square is all actually in historic district. There are, are there many parts of the village that are not only in areas, you know, where there are large three-acre estates?
But I guess the question I was also asking, Mayor, is if the assessment, instead of being kept flat, increased to 50% of the value of the, whatever was done, you know, might not that be a way of still providing a benefit, but at the same time protecting the village from those folks getting a 100% benefit?
Yes, it would be based on the assessor's evaluation upon completion of the work. So, for example, if they did do additional work that was not towards the historic preservation and the historical integrity of the structure, that would not be covered by this. So you're exactly correct. If someone, you know, spent $200,000, 100 was for doing, you know, things that, on the interior, a new bathroom, that doesn't get counted. It only counts for the work they do on the exterior for the historical integrity of the structure. So the assessor would have to evaluate the projects on a case-by-case basis and make a determination. And that's obviously how we do assessments on all projects in the village, especially after they pull a building permit.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Michael, we appreciate you joining us. You're very, you're very good about joining us at these meetings, I appreciate that.
I try.
No, you do, you do a very good job, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Rob?
Rob Corbin, 345 Hill Street. Just thought, as a owner of a historic property, I'd throw in, I'm not, I'm a bit ambivalent on this law, to be honest, but I appreciate the spirit in which it's done because the historic district is a, it's an overlay district, and it's basically a taking limitation of property rights beyond what most people face. And I know construction and maintaining a home is expensive for everyone. But most, outside the historic district, homeowners have full discretion as to the materials and methods that they want to use to maintain their homes. Building it is different, although they have a lot of discretion there. In the historic district, your discretion is severely limited by the Board of Architecture Review and Historic Preservation. I have a house with a cedar single roof on it. I will never be approved to put an asphalt roof on my house. And an asphalt roof costs about seven and a half times what a single roof does in today's world.
I think you mean the reverse, you mean the reverse, Rob.
I'm sorry, other way around. You got the point. The thing is that, and you can say that historic district has been there, and most people bought their houses knowing this, but as costs go up, the cost for the materials and methods that the Board of Architecture Review and Historic Preservation generally impose or require for approval are going up faster. They are going up faster. And so there is a burden that frankly, I, when I bought my house 25 years ago, didn't calculate. I knew there was some burden, but it's grown somewhat, not exponentially, but beyond what other costs have. So I like the spirit of this law, I appreciate it. I think those of us who maintain historic homes feel a sense of civic commitment and contribution to maintaining those homes to help the look and feel of the village. I know everyone does with their homes. But the historic homes have a particular resonance, obviously. It's why we have a historic district. And it is a burden, and not everyone is a billionaire on a five-acre estate in the state district who will benefit from this. Most people, as someone just mentioned, aren't. They're on smaller lots, most of the historic properties are on less than an acre lots, many of them less than half an acre, close to the center of the village. So I just wanted to give that context, that's all, thanks.
Thank you very much, Rob. I would also add that people need to apply for this. It's not something that is done automatically. You must actually submit paperwork and apply for this benefit. Sage, you have someone else?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, Mr. McIntyre, here's the Chairman of the ARB Historical Preservation. Thank you, Mark, Michael, Mark, for joining us.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, as you said, I'm Mark McIntyre, I chair the Architectural Review Board. I'm speaking tonight for myself, not representing the whole board, but they would probably agree. We applaud this effort. You know, as Zach said, we are a certified local government, and we spend a lot of time, you know, encouraging people to maintain properties and take them and maintain them in their historical aspect with these historic materials, which is more expensive because it helps us have what we all enjoy, Southampton Village, which is the historic aspect of what people like to see when they come here. I would address a few comments tonight. What, Mr. Zinder, what I would say to you, sir, is we have times occasionally where people come to us with homes, and one thing that the board asks is, we'll have a historic home that some alterations were done to in the 60s and 70s, for example, we'll ask them to revert back and take that home and back to its historical, to its historic perspective. This would help them fund the expense to do that, which would maintain the historic aspect of the village. And I think Rob is also right. When we have the ability to go from more expensive materials at times to maintain or build a house as it was originally intended, that has some expense burden to the homeowner or so, and incentive that helps people help us maintain the beauty of the village, I think is the right spirit. And I think the right intent of that law, so it's something that I completely support and thank the trustees and the mayor for putting forward.
Thank you, Mark, very much. Sage, do we have anyone else? Okay, any further comments from the board?
I may make a comment. My prepared statements, as usual. I wanted to take a few moments to discuss this proposed local law, which would provide a tax credit for certain renovations on properties located within Southampton Village Historic District. On its face, this may sound like a positive initiative. But in order to follow in the standard's impact, we need to break down how taxable assessed values are calculated. Southampton Village does not conduct regular reassessments to bring property values up to current market rates. The primary way a property's taxable assessed value increases and therefore its contribution to our village's tax base is through renovations. When a homeowner undertakes renovations, the cost of these renovations is added to their taxable assessed value using a formula determined by the equalization rate. This proposed law would exempt certain historic district properties from that increase, meaning that even when they complete significant renovations approved by the Architectural Review Board, their taxable assessed value will remain the same.
It's not correct.
It's not?
No. It only applies, as I've tried to explain it, to that directly affecting the historical integrity of the structure mainly on the exterior.
Correct, renovation, I'm talking about outside, exterior renovations.
Okay, well, renovations could be lots of things. There could be lots of renovations on the inside.
I apologize. Exterior renovations.
Just want to be clear.
The consequence of this is clear. When one property is given a tax break, others must absorb the difference. That means that the financial burden of maintaining our village, police, fire services, road maintenance, and other essential services will be shipped to other homeowners. And let's look at where these tax breaks are going. This historic district includes some of the most exclusive areas of our village. First Neck Lane, Ox pasture, South Main Street, Gin Lane, and others. Many of these properties benefiting from this law are multimillion-dollar estates, some worth tens of millions of dollars. from this law are multimillion-dollar estates, some worth tens of millions of dollars or more. Meanwhile, the tax burden will fall more heavily on our year-round residents, working families, and those with more modest homes. I cannot in good conscience support a law that grants tax relief to the highest value of properties while shifting costs to those who can at least afford it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. I would just like to explain again, this is not shifting the tax burden. Those in a home will still pay the taxes that they've always paid. They will just not see an immediate jump up in their assessed value due to the historical work that they are doing to maintain the exterior of their house. And then after five years, the, it phases in. So again, it is, they're not going to get a break. They're just not going to see the assessment increase immediately after they complete the historic work. That's a very specific distinction that you have to make.
Which means if they're not paying more taxes because they're not being assessed higher, the pie still has to be divided with everybody else, and therefore, instead of them absorbing more of the pie, everybody else has to pay for it.
They'll be paying the same portion of the pie as previous to the work conducted.
Right.
And everyone, everyone, Ed, will be saying, paying the same amount. You will not see people in certain homes with their, their taxes jumping up because of this. Absolutely incorrect. Absolutely incorrect. You don't understand it. I'll talk to you after about it, but you do not understand.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys, if this law was not in place, this is an agreement that we're admitting.
If you could come to the podium, sir, please.
I'm just listening.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it sounds to me like if this law was not in place, then it would not encourage some of the improvements that, that this is targeting. Therefore, there would be no net impact, really, no increase. So I understand what you're trying to say.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
This encourages people to do the improvements to the historic houses, which are expensive to deal with.
Exactly. We're trying to incentivize those.
I understand.
And again, they, there are many homes on Elm Street, North Main Street, Post Crossing, Boden Square, that are not on five acres with billionaires. And so that is, again, a misnomer. Yeah.
You encourage them to do the improvements, whether they're wealthy or not. And I imagine we're going to see an uptick on improvements, which will.
Which will help the construction business, too.
Never mind. That's another.
I'll be brief because I might.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, Paul McCormack on Cooper Street.
Thank you.
Is my understanding correct that if you're a house with a $30,000 tax bill, let's say, you do a $200,000 renovation, $50,000 is for historic facade, your taxes aren't going to go below 30 ever, again?
Ever.
But they might be reassessed on the 150 that went for some.
Correct. Exactly correct.
So the tax base might actually increase.
You're correct.
If that's the case, I'm all in favor.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
I think the goal is very clear, that no taxpayer will suffer any inequity in the tax, property tax burden. I think that's exactly the point of this. Thank you.
As Mr. Coburn suggested, and as I know full well, there are burdens to being in the Historic District. In fact, some of the letters that were written that Scott referenced, the people on Paulsy Henry and Moses Lane were objecting to the fact that the village is looking at expanding the Historic District. They don't want to get in it because, as they say, there's extra, over, extra costs and extra things they have to worry about. Mr. Bennett is here this evening. I see the audience, and we recently received a letter from him about a client he represents, who also is not particularly thrilled about being considered an historic house. So.
My understanding, if I may, is that.
Please come to.
Contrary to what preservationists like to say, every time somebody is designated a historic house, regardless of whether or not they had been previously designated, regardless of whether or not they're in a historic, Historic District, or regardless of whether or not they're in a capture zone that was expressed in the Historic District Foundation for the village, their property values decline, in some cases substantially, by millions of dollars. So this is just a little bit of a Band-Aid for the sort of overregulation that goes on. It's really not going to amount, amount to much. And I think you have to look at the overreach that's happened in the village on historic structures that were never meant to be so regulated.
This isn't about that, though, John. This is about the Band-Aid. And yes, it may just be a Band-Aid, but it does offer some relief to the people who are already in the Historic District that want to maintain their homes and keep them historic.
That's accurate. Yeah, that is accurate. I would agree.
Thank you. Thank you, John. John will always take an opportunity. All right, any further comments? Okay. Anyone else on Zoom, Sage? Okay, at this time, I'm going to close this public hearing. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Oh, did you want to speak? You'll, you'll have to wait until we get to, to public comment for that, because this is only for speaking about these public hearings. But thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, so at this time, I would open a local law, proposed local law number two of 2025, a local law meeting Chapter 107 Trees to regulate the removal of and damage to trees in a required setback. So I will make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. At this time, I was going to call on Christian Pico from the Planning Commission, who has proposed this to, to address this. Sage, is Christian Pico on there? Could you let him in, please? Thank you. There he is. Christian Pico. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right. Thank you for joining us. And introduce yourself, please, Christian.
So, thank you, Bill. It's a pleasure to be on your screen to represent the Planning Commission tonight as your chair. I am Christian Pico. Lots of familiar faces here. So, thank you. It's important to know that this recommendation indeed comes from the commission's initiative with public input over several months. However, this may be new to some of you. Understand that. And tonight, it's part of a vision to address public trees first and private trees second. Now, public trees, we've made great strides. Getting a Tree City designation in Southampton has resulted in a noticeable improvement for public trees in the village. Our Department of Public Works has done a good job planting over 200 trees last year alone. And the Tree Committee is working hard and will remain focused on public trees. And we should probably thank this opportunity, certainly to thank the Tree Committee comprised of three appointed members, Steve Phillips, Peter Grealish, and Tony Piazza. Now, tonight, it's about private trees. First, I'd like to outline the mission of the Planning Commission from your code, and I know, Trustee Simeone, you're very familiar with it as you served on this commission. So I'd like to quote the code on the Planning Commission, which says, "In order to promote public health, safety, and general welfare, a village planning commission was created for the purpose of making recommendations to the board trustees who respect us." Now, let's focus on a few facts. You all know that the current village master plan went through several iterations with many public hearing sessions. It has been posted on the village website for a long time, and anyone can refer to it. Now, this plan on page 94 reads, "To implement a tree preservation ordinance, which requires documentation of trees in any yard setback that have a caliper width greater than 10 inches, and permits would be required to remove them." Now, let's talk about what is a property setback. It is the minimum required distance between a structure and the property line. They're defined through zoning regulation, as in any municipality. Those setbacks control the density and spacing in these buildings. It preserves the privacy and views, and provide green space and maintain aesthetics. Now, I won't go into the merits of trees in a community, but I will tell you that when we worked on gas leak growers, our research clearly pointed to trees blocking the sound propagation of landscaping equipment. As the landscaping profession is well aware, you should, and all of you should know, both the towns of East Hampton and Southampton have limitations on the percentage of a lot that can be cleared of natural vegetation. Sag Harbor passed a law last year to amend its code, section 253, for those who want to look it up, requiring permitting, not just in setbacks, but the entire property. What is presented tonight is certainly not as onerous as in the towns of Southampton, East Hampton, Sag Harbor, and certain communities in the North Fork. Most of us don't want to know what to do on our property, but also don't want to see clear cutting of lots. And this is a solution for those who care about the character of Southampton. It doesn't prevent anyone from taking down a tree if the building department and their arborist determines without delay that it should. Now, I understand, we know many will have something to say tonight, and the commission wanted you to know the facts. So thank you for listening, and back to you, Bill.
Thank you, Christian, very much. So at this time, we'll go to see if anyone wants to speak on this. Also, there was some correspondence, I think, that was delivered to the village for this public hearing, and that will be entered into the record.
Yes, we have correspondence from Denise Hurley, Robert and Laura Deviney, Mitch Fowler, Kenneth Weinstein, and Penelope Wright.
Okay. So is there anyone on the list that would like to speak? Again, I guess, Penelope Wright. Please come up to the podium, please. Thank you for being here.
I, I brought in a letter that I wrote to the village board that I thought I'd like to read to everyone. Mayor Bill Manger and Southampton Village Board of Trustees, "Dear Bill Manger and Village Trustees, until I read Rob Coburn's and Sheila Piper's recent letters to the Southampton Press, I was unaware of the proposal to regulate the removal of trees from private properties in the village. But I live on Leighton Avenue, where we recently witnessed what was left of a lovely yard after it had been clear cut, and I have a new appreciation for the wisdom of some sort of regulation determined by the village vis a vis the cutting down of trees. While I agree that responsible homeowners would be unlikely to clear cut heritage trees in an area outside of a home's footprint, that is not always the case. So this legislation can be useful to rein in irresponsible property owners. Mr. Coburn points out, maybe correctly, that this law might be difficult to enforce, but that possibility is not enough, in my view, to make it worthless to enact. I hope you will give this modest, yet important proposal favorable consideration. Thank you."
Thank you, Penny. Is there someone else who would like to speak on this topic? Sir?
Hi, I'm Jim Sandis. I live on Hill Street. I love trees. I've written letters to the Southampton Press about trying to preserve trees. I've spent well over $100,000 planting trees on my property, but I've also cut down a lot of trees on my property. And I've read the statute, and I, I'm all in favor of the, the general goal of preserving a treed village, but this statute is poorly drafted, unnecessary, unfair, and open to abuse, and I oppose it. There are many reasons to cut down trees. When I bought my property 17 years ago, it was populated with about 50 Norway maples. It was like a field of telephone poles. By cutting them, I allowed the canopies of the few that I left to bloom into beautiful trees. If I had not cut those trees, some of them well over 10 inches, my property would be a dark forest. Norway maples suck the nutrients out of the ground and make it so that it's impossible to grow anything else in the area. So not all trees are created equal. Cedars, for example, will turn into flags when they're planted next to each other. They'll just grow in one direction. You know, roots will, even when coming from the setback, will destroy things that are outside of the, or within the setbacks. So I think this statute has many problems. First of all, the premise is wrong. If you drive around the estate section, you will see 20-acre estates with barely a tree on them. Nothing in the statute, the statute which says the trees are really important to us, addresses the need to plant trees on any of those estates. Those people are allowed to have 20 acres of green grass. If the goal is to prevent clear cutting, there are statutes, and I agree with them. I would support a statute that required some percentage of, of trees on the land. But to simply judge the tree based on its diameter is, is vastly wrong. The size of the tree is not the determinative factor. The variety, for example. The property behind me is populated with alliantis. I don't know if you know what an alliantis tree is, but it's a, according to USDA, it's a invasive Chinese tree that should be eradicated whenever possible. The USDA says you should be killing those trees, but instead, they're over 10 inches tall. You need a permit to even cut it down. The, the roots of those alliantis come over into my property and sprout new alliantis on my land. If I spray those with Roundup, it may kill the alliantis on the next property, but the USDA tells me to do that. You tell me I need a permit to cut, I can't even cut down the tree because it's on my neighbor's property. So the variety matters, the location of the tree matters. For example, if it's shading my pool area, whereas the same tree somewhere else might be beautiful, what that tree drops matters. The, the, for example, the crabapple tree, my crabapples, one of them, would cause hundreds of turkeys to come into my yard and basically crap all over my, my pool deck because the crabapples were so delicious to the wild turkeys that are now populating the East End. The age and the health of the tree matters. You don't have to wait until the tree is about to fall over and break down your house because if you clear that tree, you can plant a new one. That will be a mature, beautiful tree in the future. I have over 30 varieties of trees on my property. I love trees, but this statute does not deal with the problem. It, it also interferes with the land use because aesthetics also matter. What kind of tree? I have hemlock trees because I think they're beautiful. I, I cut down cedars to plant hemlocks. Well, I like cedars. I like hemlocks better than cedars. That's my aesthetic, and that's my right to use my land as I see fit. It's a basic liberty right. And, and so, well, I, you know, I absolutely like the idea of preserving the, the treed nature of our village. I think this statute is a blunt instrument. It's poorly drafted. And I would urge you to table this and put it back to a committee. I was happy to see Christian, who I know, speak about this. I've actually spoken to him about trees. I, I think he's a man who could do, his committee could do a better job drafting this if they had more input. Frankly, I didn't know, and maybe I should have read the planning board minutes more than I do, but I didn't know that this was coming up until literally last week when this came up. If anybody asked me, I, I could give you good comments on how to make this statute better. I, I applaud the goal of the statute. I do not think this statute should be passed. I think you should table it for a couple of weeks and allow you to go, allow actual comments.
No, I appreciate your comments. And actually, if you do have suggestions, I certainly welcome them, and, and please send them here to Village Hall. I'm happy to review them with the, with the commission and the, and the Tree Committee, and we can look at that and figure out how to make some improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, I'm sorry, should we go ladies first? No, I'm glad you let you go first. Come on. Sorry, Orson, you'll have to wait a minute.
My name's Sally Van Allen. I live at 49 North Main Street. I, too, love trees, and I really appreciate this being designated as a Tree City. I'm very excited about all the work that has been done to do. I'm very excited about all the work that has been done to do that. I'm sure there was a lot of background work. I'd love to see some things, when I've gone to other towns that are tree cities, there's signage as you enter a tree city that announces that, so it sets the tone for what we're trying to project as to who we are. So, I look forward to that. I look forward to the education programs that are mentioned, that are part of this designation. But I draw the line at my property line. I have volunteer maples in my privet that is on the border. And for those that don't know, some places say the privet is an invasive species, so that may come next, just a warning to people, not from me, but I don't feel like I need to go to the village. And though you don't designate how much that permit would cost, I would have to incur costs probably to apply for a permit to take those trees out of my hedgerow. I have an old house, very old house. In fact, the only reason I'm working full-time as a living is to preserve my old house. So, back to the windows, I'm all in favor of that. I have a modest house on North Main Street. I was able to do the windows on one half, but not the other. And just so you also know, your insurance rates go up if you have historic windows in your property. So, it's not just your taxes, it's a lot of things. But I digress. I'm confused, somebody said 10 inches, somebody, what I read said eight. This is only an eight-inch diameter.
No, no, that's an old version. You have the wrong version. I don't know who gave that to you. It should be 10.
Imagine an inch on either side.
Yeah, please, come forward.
It's not an eight-inch diameter, and they changed it to 10.
No, all right, I understand that.
But this is, I brought up visual aid. This is the width of the trunk of the tree that's being talked about. So, no one waits till a maple tree in your privet gets to be this big before they want to dip it out.
All right.
I'm sorry, I'm just, so I just, just so everyone understands, this is, it's a sizable tree. There are a lot of other things I want to address.
All right, thank you for the visual aid, Sheila. Thank you.
You can leave that there.
All right, back to you, ma'am, sorry.
I'm the fifth generation in this house, and if you know my mother, she didn't take down any trees. And I tell you, my maples are bigger than this in my hedgerow, just FYI. I don't feel I should have to get my landscaping approved by the village. There was, my great-grandfather put in an orchard. Most of that orchard has been destroyed in 120 years by hurricanes. Apple trees don't live for long. I planted three pear trees, four cherry trees, I'm putting in more apple trees, I'm trying, I bring in other trees. I, too, had to take down a forest of maple trees. And if anybody knows, it's really expensive to take down a tree. I'm also very concerned about these old trees hitting properties that aren't mine. I've gone to great lengths to take down any branches that could potentially hit another building. If you know about historic, my house is only 30 feet from the curb. It's only 18 feet from the village's tree line. There's a dead tree in front of my house now that many branches have fallen off to the point where the village has been there at 6:00 in the morning sawing them up, they were so big. I feel like there are a lot of trees that need love and help right now without going into people's properties to regulate how much they can have on their trees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Orson, you were next.
Thank you very much. I also want to thank Christian Pico and the Planning Commission for all the work they did. I think it's obviously an important issue. I would just speak personally, there was one on the public side. I live on Walnut Street, and we lost a tree that upset a lot of people. I mean, we have a beautiful row of trees there, and when it was cut down, we had heard it was sick, and then maybe it wasn't sick, and no one really knew what happened, and the uncertainty upset the whole neighborhood. So, just having some sort of official arborist, I think, and understanding that there would be a process in that situation would have helped tremendously. So, on the public side, I really do appreciate this. As far as homeownership, I respect private property rights, but I think it does, to me, sound like it strikes a good balance, and again, it comes down to the arborist. That sounds to me like no one's saying you can't cut trees down, but if you have a reasonable, well-respected, and efficient process, to me, this sounds like at least there's one check before, you know, a big tree would go. And for that, I'd be grateful, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Orson. Anyone else would like to speak on this topic? Sheila Pfeifer, why don't we have you next, and then we'll go to Mackie Finerty. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much, Sheila Pfeifer, 56 Hildreth Street. I'm obviously here to support the tree resolution, which actually I brought up at a public board meeting in July, last July. I was told to go through the Planning Commission, which I did. I went to the very next Planning Commission and have been to just about every Planning Commission meeting since, and I want to thank Christian very much. I don't know if he's still listening, but I thank him for a good summary of, you know, the Planning Commission's role, but also of what this law is about. As many people probably know, I do consider this to be a very, the idea of removing trees on private property to be a challenging and complex issue, and it requires weighing the rights of individual owners versus the common good of the whole community. Because I really believe that every tree in our community, well, almost every, maybe not some of those little ones, but stabilizes soil, prevents erosion and flooding, absorbs air pollution, creates oxygen, provides shade and habitat for wildlife, offers a natural barrier to noise, and is aesthetically pleasing, contributing to the serenity and beauty of the village. Additionally, trees are carbon sinks, sequestering twice as much carbon dioxide as they emit, making them important mitigators of climate change. The removal of a mature tree deprives the whole community of these benefits, not just the individual owner. The health, welfare, and long-term safety of village residents are directly linked with preserving our trees. This resolution only proposes regulating trees larger than a 31-inch circumference that are in the setback area of a property. And I can't emphasize that idea of the setback enough. People are talking about how they have, you know, trees and orchards and, you know, whatever. Of course, no one's talking at this point, anyway, about regulating the trees that are in the building envelope, regulating anything that's not in the setback that in actual fact, the jurisdiction already has, I mean, the village already has jurisdiction over. You can't extend your pool into the setback, you can't put on in addition to your house in the setback, you know, et cetera. So, the law is simply adding permission to remove a large tree if you want to remove it. No one's coming in from the village and saying, "We want that tree," and cutting it down. As Christian pointed out in the Comprehensive Plan update, which the village undertook and then approved in 2022, the concept of preserving trees is discussed on page 94. And then, I'll just say in closing, that this resolution is only a beginning step, I feel, for our village, but it is an important step to raise awareness about the importance of trees for the good of the whole community and start a commitment to protecting this natural heritage. And I urge the board to adopt the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Mackie Finerty, sorry, she was next, then I'm going to come to you. Mackie.
Good evening, Mackie Finerty, Woolly Street. I'm here in front of the fourth mayor that we've had committees to bring this, starting with Mark Epley, in my experience. We didn't have success then, we need to have success now. All of you read the newspapers, you know exactly what's happening to our environment. Even at Davos, they voted all the liberals and conservatives that the most important thing we could do is plant trees everywhere, all over, every country. That was the best thing we could do for the environment. So, this is a good time to start. We can't keep postponing this. We see what's happening from the stats. We need to continue to improve on this. This is a beginning piece of legislation, and often that's frustrating because people on one side want a lot more, people on the other side want nothing. I wanted some things in the newspaper that I read, I was pretty surprised, it talked about the history of, we had a lot less trees, and now we have more trees. We all know that's completely wrong. All of Long Island had trees. Most of them have been completely destroyed for firewood, for New York City, for farms, for grazing. In past decades, we've started to plant more trees, we're much more sensitive to the whole environmental thing. So, we don't have as many trees as we used to have, and we never will because of the building, but we have to do whatever we can and not cut down the ones that are there. Right now, I think you all know, we're not in exactly a pro-environment situation in Washington. And they said that puts it on all the rest of us, the states, the counties, the villages, to do more than they ever would have wanted to do, because now it's on them to save the environment. And so, I'm looking at all of you, asking you, please, be some of the ones that are going to improve it. Enforcement, that's always interesting to me. I don't know any law that's perfectly enforced. Is there anywhere? I mean, that is why we have all kinds of people trying to enforce things, but we never, ever achieve anything. So, we would never say, "Don't pass something because you can't perfectly enforce it." Of course you can't. Everybody knows that right from the start. You're not going to chase down every tree in the village, but you're going to do the best you can, and that will be an improvement for everybody. People talk about liberty right on their property. As you know, we already tell you everything you can do with your property. When I hear people stand up and say, "Don't tell me what to do with my property," I'm like, where do they live? You know, do they have a setback? Do they have a height thing? Do they have requirements on what it's made of, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? You know, where your cesspool goes, where your pool goes, where you, don't put this in the front, don't put that in the back. Yeah, we tell you what to do with your property. We hope it's for the best of you and for the best of the community. I talked about the arborist, I saw in there that there was an arborist. What I wasn't clear about, whether in the village, we have a certified arborist. I understand, working on this years ago, that there's a certification you can get, and I, in fact, thought we had done that, where we had an inside certified, because we used to hire people. I don't know what the status is now. And that, in fact, we make that an important job in the village and make it a promotion and encourage other people who work for the village to become certified arborists and help with this, because with the amount of street trees we have and the amount of properties we have, it's a huge job. And so, it was a way to, you know, benefit our employees while we're benefiting the whole town. So, I don't know if that's been worked on, but I hope that it will be. So, when I see the word mentioned, arborist, I certainly hope it's a certified arborist, and also the person on the committee that's going to make these decisions. So, I'm urging you tonight to please pass this legislation for all the reasons you state there, for our health and our water, retaining our soil. And as you know, we've all been extremely lucky in, on the hurricanes. But those of you who've lived here for a long time or read the history, as you know, we've had hurricanes that just leveled practically every tree in the village. We have to stay on top of it when we can stay on top of it, because someday we are going to have problems. I also saw in the paper saying, you know, it's okay if you knock down all the trees on the property, and because you just replant them. That is wrong. When we studied this, the science of it, a number of years ago, they said it took 35 years for a mature tree to reach its maximum CO2 takeout of the lake. So, when you say, "Oh, I'll knock down this one, but I'll just plant another one," no, it doesn't work that way. It just doesn't work that way scientifically. So, please consider that. It's, you know what people plant. They don't plant anything that looks anything like the trees that were taken down, especially the big old ones. So, I hope all of you will vote tonight to start this process and move us forward on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackie. Kimberly Allen? Okay, I guess, Rob. I tried to get you there, Kimberly.
Rob Coburn again on Hill Street. One note on science, which is that most plants grow 5% to 10% in volume every year, and they increase their ability to absorb carbon dioxide by 5% to 10% every year. So, we'd have to be removing more than 5% to 10% of our trees every year to not be increasing our ability to absorb the carbon dioxide. I wanted to address a couple of things that Christian Pico had alluded to. The Comprehensive Plan does, mentions trees in three places, including the recommendation for a law on page 94. It starts off on page 39 by saying, "The village should enact a tree protection ordinance to help protect larger and older trees from being cut down. This is discussed further in chapter six." But it's not. There's no background given, there's no rationale given, there's no listing of how many residents said it, why they said it, there's no explanation, obviously in an editing era, but you can read chapter six. There's a discussion of community trees and public trees, but no private tree law. Then we get to page 94, and page 94 does recommend implementing a tree preservation ordinance, requiring documentation of trees in any yard setback with a caliper width greater than 10 inches. This documentation would occur during approval process for a new structure or an application for a demolition permit. That's what the Comprehensive Plan calls for. This law applies to every property now. It applies to every tree, living or dead, standing or not. If we had a hurricane or a blizzard come through, it does, let's read the law, that's what it says. If it's fallen on the ground, you need a permit under this law to remove it. If we had a hurricane or blizzard come through and knocked down hundreds of trees, you'd have hundreds of people coming getting a permit to remove the tree that fell over.
There's an exemption for a state of emergency, actually, Rob.
Okay, okay, but if I have a dead, Bill, if I have a dead tree that falls on my property
I think, actually, the building inspector would probably give you a permit pretty quickly to get rid of it.
Well, would he? And what would it cost?
Come on.
What would it cost?
It costs, what it costs to remove a tree from your property.
Okay, but the important point here is the Comprehensive Plan calls for a law regulating at times a demolition permit or new construction permit, not status quo ante for everyone else. The other thing I'd like to address is, and I've heard Christian mention, I've heard from a number of people, that Southampton Town, East Hampton Town, Sag Harbor all have tree ordinances, more onerous. They were addressing real substantive problems. The towns of East Hampton and Southampton enacted their tree laws because there was large clear cutting going on in basically virgin forests for subdivisions and new construction, and they wanted to control that. It was a visible problem that was accelerating. In Sag Harbor, the problem is they don't have as many trees. They've got a lot more pavement per square mile, they've got smaller lots, a lot, there are just fewer mature trees. They have fewer trees in their public setback, and because of the small lots and the small setbacks, smaller than our code allows, one tree can have visual impact and shade impact on two, three, four, or five properties sometimes, depending on where it's planted. That's not as likely to happen here. The point being that they had real problems they were addressing. The real problem we seem to be addressing here, and I appreciate the science of trees and absorbing carbon, is that people, and I, too, get upset when a tree, an old tree gets cut down, or when a lot gets clear cut. But how often does it happen? We just don't have a massive problem this way. And so, I think this is an interesting solution in search of a problem, and I would recommend tabling this particular recommend law, and perhaps going back to what the Comprehensive Plan recommends, which is looking at lots that are subject to demolition applications or new construction applications. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Kimberly.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Thank you for reaching out to me last week while I was 3,000 miles away.
Well, you were a former trustee that was very involved with trying to save trees.
Yes, and I, as everybody knows, I'm a big supporter of trees and tree legislation. The only thing is, when I read through this legislation, I saw some issues with it, and I may be off-base, and I do appreciate everything that Sheila and all the Planning Commission members did, but I, it creates a law to prevent people from cutting down trees without defining what is the most critical. And when I benchmarked other villages, they really clearly defined what their heritage trees were, things that made a significant difference to not only the character of the village, but to the history of the village. So, I mean, I have 10 pages of notes and information that I'm happy to share with you.
Yeah, I would love to share with the board and also with the Christian Pico and the Planning Commission, so that we can, we can look at that. planning commission, so that we can look at that and see if it can be incorporated.
Because there are a lot of trees in the village that are nuisance trees, and that happened to us. Our neighbor had a tree. It was canted. And our insurance company said, "We're not going to re-up you because that tree is about to fall on your roof." So, we had to call that owner, whose management team answered the phone and tried to reach him when he was in Europe. And, you know, if, how do we get that type of thing solved? We also have a number of friends and neighbors who have trees that have grown to be so great that they're uprooting their pipes and gas and structures within their homes. They're affecting the insurance coverage for their houses because they've become so big. And I don't know if they're heritage trees or not. I suspect many of them are. But I think we need to help them solve that problem. What do we do in a situation like that? If someone has an insurance policy, does the arborist say, "This is a really critical tree, and you can't cut it down"? We don't really talk about that, and other legislation does. It protects the owner from threatening situations, whether it's on their property or neighbors' properties. The other part of this is, I don't know if you really have the process locked up, because in the situation with my neighbor, I'd have to force the neighbor to make the application to cut down the tree, so I could get my house insured again. And they have to fill out that application. Then they come to the village, and they wait for an answer for 30 days. You have up to 30 days to answer it. But if you have questions, does that clock start again? So, is it, you know, do you have some type of escape valve for somebody who's in an emergency situation?
There is already something in the code on that.
Is there on that?
Yes.
I suspected there might be.
It's 10710. All I did was add the language "problem tree," so that's exactly what you're describing. It's already covered by the current code.
So, I can go to somebody and say, "I have a problem tree," and they're going to help me get permission to get that cut down quickly?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can follow the side of the code.
So, I would also really look at the process on that. And then, I had a couple of ideas, and one is, many people have problem trees on their property, mostly because the trees have grown so large that they're threatening the home or encroaching on the neighbor's property. You may want to have, once you've defined a heritage tree, you may want to have a tree swap or some ability for that person to give that tree to another property that's larger and can accommodate it, which we don't have today. We have it for historical homes. Many are moved to other spots. But I wouldn't want to approve legislation when we haven't defined what's a really critical tree to our community and to our native Long Island community versus something that's invasive and really a problem. I think people should have the right to get rid of those. But again, I'm just one opinion.
All right. No, thank you.
And I'm happy to share all my notes.
No, please, yeah.
The only other thing I will say is, I know you had the planning commission and a lot of people who really cared about trees, which is great. But the other municipalities who enacted legislation around this, they brought in experts who also studied plant pathology, because we don't want invasive trees and we don't want trees that have infections that can get to other trees.
Yeah, it's hoped that the arborist would be able to determine that and obviously take care of that.
Okay. But, I mean, you should probably pull in a broader set of people, also individuals who run the Long Island State Parks. They have a lot of information on what's considered heritage trees, but right now, this is very open-ended. And I don't know if you have the process or the resources to support an evaluation process for the magnitude of trees that could potentially be cut down if you don't define what's critical.
Right.
And thank you for doing this. It's very important.
Thank you, Kimberly. Thank you for, we look forward to receiving your notes, too. Thank you. Who else would like to speak on this topic? Anyone? Is there anyone on Zoom? Sage? Okay, anyone on the board wish to speak? Ed?
I guess I'll give it a try.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I'd like to express my gratitude to Sheila and to the planning commission for the time and dedication they've given to this effort. Of course, preserving trees is very important, but I think there's a number of concerns with this law that should be addressed before we move forward. For example, it requires a permit for the removal of any tree that are alive within a setback area, as long as tree has a diameter of 10 inches or greater. Now, should we be identifying the type of trees that truly should be preserved and that can be considered heritage trees instead of any tree just based on its diameter? Should we limit a property's owner's judgment in deciding what trees to maintain on one's own property? Another key issue is enforcement. The current draft states that the responsibility for issuing permits falls or falls the board of trustees or their designee. Without clarity on who the designee will be, we are left with a process that could be inconsistent, subjective, or even susceptible to favoritism. Residents should have clarity on what qualifies for approval and what does not. This should not be left to interpretation on a case-by-case basis. The law also includes a provision requirement to permit for adding more than 2 inches of loose fill around the tree. To be clear, adding too much loose fill can be harmful, potentially suffocating tree roots by limiting their oxygen supply. So, yes, this is a valid concern. But does this need to be a permitted requiring action? That is also where this law may be overly restrictive. If goal is education and best practices of tree health, there may be better ways to achieve that than imposing fines and bureaucratic hurdles for homeowners. Speaking of fines, the penalties outlined in this legislation are significant, up to $10,000 per violation, along with the possibility of jail time. That level of enforcement, combined with an unclear permitting process, raises real concerns about how this law will be applied in practice. I believe the original purpose was to find ways to manage the clear cutting of a property prior to demolition and construction, and I fully support the idea of strengthening tree protections in Southampton Village. However, this should not be achieved by legislation that places a burden and limits the ability of a homeowner to maintain the landscaping of one's own property in the normal course of ownership. Thank you.
Actually, I'd just ask Eileen, who's our village attorney and also a judge, just to maybe speak a little bit about the penalties.
Well, there's a minimum penalty, I think, per tree of...
$1,000.
$1,000 and a maximum of $10,000. It has to be significant enough to deter and not make it a cost of, you know, just operating a valuable piece of property. So, if we have $1,000, some people say, "I don't care about the rules and do it." So, that's why, I mean, I didn't read all of the letters, but at least one letter told us that $10,000 was a spit in the ocean and wouldn't deter anybody from taking trees down. So, you know, we can only do what we can do. We, you know, so that's why we have provisions like that.
But the judge has discretion, is also my point.
That's the point, right. And for people who completely disregard it, and the $10,000 per tree is not a significant deterrent, we can go to, we can institute a civil action in Supreme Court to try to maintain it, so. But I'd be interested in your suggestions, Mr. Simeoni.
To draft a law that, as Rob also mentioned, draft a law that deals with demolition and construction and not a law just that covers the whole village at all times.
Every tree is different. That's why it becomes difficult if you start saying, "Maybe trees..."
And also, maybe should identify trees that are really important to the community, heritage trees.
No, we'll take a look at this. So, if anyone else wishes to speak, sorry, ma'am.
Hi, Christina Gale, Jennings Avenue. So, would this also apply to pruning something on your property?
No. Pruning is actually specifically called for in this, that you can do any pruning or topping to your tree.
Okay.
It does not have anything to do with that. I mean, we could read the whole proposed local law, and you can hear that section, but I don't think you want to do that right now.
No, as long as pruning and topping is okay. So, if you're maintaining your property and you want to keep it nice and neat and clean, that's okay.
Absolutely. Yep, and you don't need any permits for that.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you for asking that question. That's a good question. Christine, would you like to come forward?
I just think you need something in there about diseased, enormous diseased trees on somebody's property. If it's been determined by a senior arborist, you know, that it needs to come down or it needs to be...
I think that's in there, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, nothing in the code says you can't take these trees down. It just says you need to go to the village and get a permit before you do it.
Right, but if you have a proposal to have work where they have to dig around the circumference of a tree, as an example, or you, somebody's told you, you have a diseased tree, like I had a silver maple that was dying from within and was very dangerous.
Well, that you need to remove.
Right, but I have to go get a, pay for a permit from the village for everything, right?
If it's in the required setback.
Okay.
That's where the proposal is. Yeah.
Even if it's in LIPA's setback, the PSDG's setback.
That's probably a different story. LIPA comes in and chops our trees down. All right.
I have a few things to say.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Stevenson.
Obviously, we've had viewpoints from both sides of the issues here tonight, and it's difficult. But I do thank the planning commission and Christian Pico and the work they did to advance this, because I think even though this is a contentious issue, there's probably almost unanimous agreement that the one thing that we really don't like is when somebody, a developer comes in, buys a property and clear cuts every tree in order to make their building process better. And that certainly is something that we would like to not have happen. As I sit up here and I listen to the people, how do I decide what's the right thing to do in terms of casting a vote on this important issue? So, I listen to all the people, and I have to say, I get input and my mind is enriched by some of the ideas that are presented. And Sheila, even, you've talked about this for some time, and one of the ideas you presented months ago was that we don't own trees. The tree lives 200 years, and we might own the house for 10 years, and we're the caretaker of the tree. And that resonated with me. I also listened to the other folks who talked this evening about the gentleman who was speaking about his love of trees, and he likes cedars, and he doesn't like cedars, and he likes hemlocks or whatever, and his points of view. So, all of those things go in, and at some point, I have to take, obviously, my own experience. So, I moved to Southampton in 2000, full-time, built, purchased a house that was in construction, and probably planted at that time 20 trees. My daughter at that time was five or six years old, and she had planted in her kindergarten class an acorn or something. And by the time we moved to Southampton, it was now three feet tall. And she was like, "Daddy, can I plant this tree in there?" And I said, "Sure, go ahead." Flash forward to 2022, it is now a large tree in a place where it was blocking the light, the branches had split, and there was sort of leaning over. The guy we have come in to take care of our tree said, you know, "Mr. Stevenson, that thing's going to split pretty soon." And I had to say, "Hun, I'm going to take down your tree. We're going to try and take a cutting and get it to sprout and plant the second version of this tree for you." She said, "Dad, it's okay. You don't have to do that." But in any case, we cut that tree down. And it kind of would have rubbed me the wrong way to have to go get permission to do this. I planted it. I planted 20 trees on my property. My carbon footprint was certainly positive in my favor in terms of trees. Again, when I was building my house, I really liked birches. And the guy from Marty's came over, and I said, "I'd like to get some birches right there." He goes, "No, you don't want birches." I said, "Why not?" He said, "Because they only last like 20 years, and then they die, and then they fall over, and you're putting it right next to your house. You don't want to do that." I said, "But I really like birches. I mean, in 20 years, we'll deal with it." So, now, it's 20 years later, and the thing is about like that. So, I better get that thing cut down before this law gets enacted.
It's not in the setback.
Anyway, it's the point. Not all trees are created equal. I mean, there's some trees that are heritage trees that are worth saving, and there are some that just aren't. Bordering my property at the store, we had some trees that literally branches were falling off in storms and damaging the customers' or my employees' cars there. I brought in Davey Tree Company. They said, "Oh, those are such crappy trees. They rot from the inside, and you've got to get rid of those, because even the ones that look healthy are going to fall down and land on somebody." Very expensive, have to take those trees down. To have to then go pay another $500 to get the arborist to write an opinion that I can then take to the board and say, "Cut these down," when a professional is already telling me to cut them down, doesn't sit with me. So, I think the law is well-intended. I think it's got a great potential, but as some of the people said tonight, I think in its current form, it's a little too blunt. And maybe with some additional input from people in the community and professionals, we could refine it a bit so that it wasn't quite so burdensome to the homeowner and still did a good job of defending the village's important trees.
Thank you. Thank you, Roy. Appreciate your comments. Robbie, more say?
I would just like to thank everyone for their comments. There was a lot of things that came to mind that I took note on. And please understand that this is a time for us to have a conversation so that we can incorporate your ideas, your suggestions, things from the expert. And correct me if I'm wrong, mayor, we're not voting on this this evening.
No, no.
This is exactly what is intended, to have these conversations, to get the information. We want to hear from you. Please, everyone that the mayor spoke to, please submit them this evening or not tomorrow so that we can have time to evaluate it. And then, I would think, mayor, that we would come back again and discuss it and see where we are with that and that we're in some type of agreement, because that's what this is about. And thank you.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Any other final comments? Otherwise, I will not close the public hearing, but adjourn it until the meeting on March, I don't know the date, 13th. Exactly a month, okay. Until March 13th. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you all very much. Now, we'll go to correspondents to the board. Before we get to the public comment, go ahead. Mr. Administrator.
We have correspondents from the Southampton Association in support of the cell tower. We have correspondents from Mr. David Rung, who speaks in opposition to comments made by trustee Robin Brown at a recent meeting. We have correspondents from Louis and Eileen Puglisi, who are very complimentary to the DPW for its recent snow removal efforts. Correspondence from Nick Griebus regarding the town code and how it governs hedges on corner lots. And correspondence from Bennett and Reed LLP regarding the architectural review board.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I will open up public comment for any topics that any members of the public wish to discuss here this evening. Please, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, trustees. Good evening, village staff. Thank you for the opportunity to have a conversation. My name is Ellen Herman. I live at 94 Halsey Street. I'm here today, tonight, as, long night, as part of a large group of homeowners from the northwest section of the village who strongly oppose the potential expansion of the historic district in our area, which includes Armon Street, Cooper Street, Halsey Street, Henry Street, and Moses Lane. We understand that the village, you know, through consultants, is studying at this time, this potential expansion. In late January 2025, we submitted a letter to the mayor, I think Scott mentioned it, and Roy did, expressing our opposition, signed by approximately 40 homeowners. That number has since grown to about 50, with more support continuing to come in. And we'll provide you with an updated letter as soon as possible. I don't want to reiterate the full letter. It's a long night. I just want to highlight four quick, primary reasons for the opposition. The first is financial burden. Homeowners may face increased insurance premiums, I've checked, I know I would, and ongoing maintenance costs to comply with historic district requirements. The second is really property restrictions. Additional oversight, you know, in addition to what the ARB does already and regulations would likely limit renovations, expansions, and streetscape modifications, which could in turn reduce the pool of potential buyers in a... in a resale situation. Not everyone wants to live in a historic district. They might love it, they might enjoy it, but they don't want to be, you know, constrained by those regulations. The third is really kind of incompatibility with the existing development. The proposed restrictions would conflict really with the many newer, larger structures that are more designed for contemporary living that we see today in 2025, that now really dominate these streets. So this raises some concerns about fairness and just the procedural integrity of expanding the district for what is essentially unasked-for action. I guess lastly, would just be really a request. We feel that there's been like a little bit of a lack of transparency and resident involvement. So residents really weren't notified of this potential expansion or study. Given that the study is still ongoing, we want to ensure that the opposition is formally recognized today and that we're fully involved in the decision-making process before really any final determinations are made. Because really, it will impact all of the homeowners on those streets. Unless any of you live on those streets, it won't impact you directly. So we seek full trans, in summary, we seek full transparency regarding your timeline, your approval process, the public comment period, not just for me tonight, and which governing body will really make the final decision on this expansion. So we request open communication with your, with the mayor's office and the approval board to ensure that our concerns are acknowledged, you know, at every stage of this process, unless you want to just halt the proposal now. That works too.
Thank you.
Thank you. So those are my remarks.
Please, Ellen, you can come and speak to me anytime. Seriously. Just, you know, call my office, we'll set up an appointment anytime you want to do that.
Right. I think, I think the 50 or so residents, you know, are just very concerned about the unasked-for action and the potential consequences. I know that some people have told me that they've called their insurance companies and they're going to be dropped if they're in a historic district. I mean, my particular point individually, again, not representing the 50 or more, is if I want to sell my house down the road, I'm not 25. You know, not everyone wants to buy a house in a historic district. Brokers have told me that there's significant potential devaluation. Not everyone's a historian.
Sure.
So.
Understood.
Those are the points.
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, no, thank you very much, Ellen, for coming forward.
Thank you.
And thank you, you know, for your time here this evening.
Yes, thank you to everyone. So.
And I don't know, I'm going to ask the village attorney maybe to just give a brief outline of how this process is supposed to work, though. Once they do the review, it actually goes to the architectural review board.
It does, but you're, I don't know the answer to it.
Okay.
Okay.
The planning department is somebody who can give you those.
Follow up. Thank you very much. It's been a long night.
No, thank you very much, Ellen. We appreciate it.
For you guys. Good coffee next time.
May I say something, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I think, we spoke about this briefly, Mr. Mayor, and I think clearly we want to be transparent, but I think with technology and the times that we live in, we can certainly use things to get that message out more so. So I would respectfully ask the mayor and our village administrator and the lawyer to see about creating a column within our website so that you can, you know, turn to it at any time to see what's going on, maybe a little area that they can put a little question in. And because that's why we're here, to have this conversation, to have these ideas or other ideas to come forth. So I would respectfully ask the mayor for us to consider that. Would that be agreeable to you?
I'm just one of several. So if it's agreeable to me, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, great.
I think it just depends on how it all shakes out.
Well, the first thing we're going to start with is the conversation and communication.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much, Trustee Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a hand up in the, yeah, sorry, sure. Evening.
Bruce Mermelstein, 164 Halsey Street, on, you know, to go on on the issue regarding historic designation. I never was informed on any of this. I never saw any notice, anything in the mail. So it wasn't until Ellen came over and, you know, to our home and, you know, told us about it. I had no idea regarding this. What I want to know is, why? Why is it being done? I mean, I can see areas like South Main Street. Definitely, I walk down South Main Street, drive through it. I look at the homes there. Absolutely. I go down to Halsey Street where I live, not even the same. I would have confused the two streets together. You know, for all the different hardships it's causing the community as far as insurance, being able to sell in the future, I just don't see a reason for this at all. I don't see any upside. Again, it's not like I'm going through down South Main Street. You know, those homes, absolutely, you know, historic, they look at, you know, let it go. Halsey Street, you know, no, I just don't see it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Christine, did you have a comment too? Did I see your hand go up?
I was just going to say, there's also two other, is it only two other areas, the eastern, southern, and northwestern or something?
I'd have to look again at what.
The thing is that I think that just that, I don't know, I don't think anybody knows about it. That's all.
Well, obviously, it was talked about by the, by the architectural review board and they're the ones that went out to get a grant that actually the village did receive $40,000 to conduct this survey.
I remember hearing that.
So it's actually not costing us that much money because it's being paid for by a grant. The ARB applied for that grant. The village received it from the state. They, again, hired a well-renowned firm to go out and do a survey, basically to take an inventory of what is in the village and then come back with their recommendations. We don't know what their recommendations may be. They may say, It doesn't make sense. But we need to know what is out there before anyone can make any sort of evaluation.
But you have designated areas. I think they have, somebody has designated areas in the village.
Yeah, again, I would have to look at exactly which ones are on the, on the list of where they were reviewing them. I think some might have been around Toilsome at Little Plains. There, I can't remember all areas.
Lewis Street, over.
Lewis Street, part of Lewis Street, that's correct. I, yeah. But anyway, so, but then it'll come to the ARB and then they will have, you know, public meetings about it. We had a public meeting actually when we had to agree to accept the grant from the state of New York. So at that point, we got involved, meaning the board of trustees got involved.
It's just, I don't know, sometimes if there could be some more, I don't know, way of people knowing, you know, the ARB is going to have a public hearing. I don't know, put it somewhere.
Well, I mean, it's not going to be for months because they're doing the survey. The survey is going to take, take a while.
Right.
I mean, no one's expecting to get any, I'm sorry that Mark McIntyre, the chairman of the ARB, didn't stay on the Zoom because he probably could have answered some of these questions.
It was hard to hear him.
Okay, well, I, there's, you're asking me some questions that I actually do not have the answers to. Otherwise, I would share them with you. Yeah, I mean, honestly, I would go to the ARB and speak to the ARB because they're the ones that are doing this evaluation. Because, I mean, again, I can try and get you the information again from them, but they are the ones that are leading this. Mr. Rose, did you want to speak?
Sure. John David Rose, architect. My office is in Southampton Village. As you know, I make a living out of preservation of historic structures. And I just want to add, it is much more expensive, not a little, it is much more expensive to add on to and or build onto a historic structure than it is conventional construction. So you really need to think about when you expand it into areas that it's a big deal financially. That's all I want to add.
Yeah. No, thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Bennett would like to speak.
Yeah, my fear is, what's going on here is the same thing that went on with this creation, all of a sudden, this grab of contemporary homes on Meadow Lane. And it's the absolute lack of transparency. And you have to remember, this is, this is a, it's not a direct democracy. It's a representative democracy. But it's incumbent upon you, as far as I'm concerned, to represent the will of the citizens, the owners, the taxpayers, and not let this thing be driven by people with a penchant for preservation in an unrestricted way. You have people, I'm not going to call them fanatics, but they have aspects of that. So what you have to do is grab that out and you be the steward. You're the people who are politically responsible. And I mean that not just in the voting booth. I mean that you're the ones with the true fiscal responsibility. Because I'm seeing what is happening is a repeat of what happened with the five houses that were taken out of 15 houses on Meadow Lane. I have yet to find a citizen other than members of the architectural review board and other than a cabal of about, of modern preservationist groups who are outside of the village that are supportive of this. And I just ask you very much to talk to your citizens, your taxpayers, your voters, and ask them what they think. Because what I think you'll find is they're inevitably opposed to it. And there is a process. Article seven of the village law requires that there be not only a, but it also requires participation. So there should be hearings. It shouldn't be just given to the, and I would go so far as to say that you should become, as part of this certified, any changes, you should become the decision-maker, as was the village trustees in 1989, when this process, when the village was first certified. Have the public hearings. Don't have this happen. All of a sudden, we've seen how all of this stuff has happened in the dark, behind closed doors, and our requests, our foil requests for that process have been ignored. So don't make a repeat of this. My bottom line is, who's asking for this? I don't see the taxpayers. I don't see the homeowners. I don't see the citizens asking for it. And again, this is a representative democracy, not a direct democracy, but I think it's incumbent upon you to represent the will of the citizens, the taxpayers, not a group of people who have this as such a borderline fanaticism. Thank you.
No, thank you, Jim.
I mean that, I mean that truly.
I understand. And that's why we actually are discussing it right here and now. We're getting feedback from members of the public.
Mr. Bennett, you're needed in Washington.
Sorry, sir.
Is this a compliment or? You're needed in Washington.
Hi, Jim Sanus, 686 Hill Street again. I didn't plan on speaking further, but just listening to this conversation, I'm reminded, I mean, first of all, thank you all for your time. Thank you all for your efforts. I think tree preservation is very important. I think historic preservation is very important. I think these are all great topics. But I'm reminded of, you know, James Carville's famous, you know, statement, it's the economy's stupid. What this, this, in my opinion, what you five need to be focused on are the most important issues. And I think if you, if you did listen to the, to the village, there are two overriding issues are the traffic problem and the lack of a sewer system, the fact that the village is dying because of that. That ties into Pond Lane. I've written about a half dozen letters in the Southampton Press about the Pond Lane cleanup. It's something I care very much about. But the answer to that is not an algae harvest. I mean, the algae harvest is fine. I'm fine with it. But it's a sewer system and you're not going to fill in the gaps on, for example, windmill. They just did that thing with Shippeys and the new sewer system there. But you need to have a sewer system here. And I don't see, I've spent the last two hours sitting here listening to this, those two critical issues, they really should be number one on your agenda every time you meet. On what are you going to do? And I, I've heard, I spoke when Jesse was the mayor about the traffic and having to do something. And his answer was, it's a town problem. It's not a town problem. It is the problem in this village. Because I live on Hill Street and I have to put up with that trade parade. And we have to find some way to get that traffic out of the village. It's choking the village to death. And we have to fix the sewer system. So I'd urge you, I laud all of these other efforts, but I'd urge you to focus on the economy's stupid, so to speak.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I might actually call on trustee Zenanti, who's been actually working on the sewer committee for how many years now?
Four years.
Four years. So do you want to, do you want to speak anything about that?
Yeah, it's, it's not for lack of effort. It's not for lack of motivation. It's not for lack of understanding what the realities are, as you describe them. We have a map and plan prepared. We have hired an engineer. We have funding from the federal government. We have funding from the CPF. We need a site. And that's the problem. We have been rebuffed by a few places, but once we can find a site, we basically will be shovel-ready once we find a site. So we're on top of it. That's the reality. Sorry, sorry, but that's the reality. That's, that's what I've been dealing with for about four years.
A site for sewage plant?
Yes, a treatment plant. That's right. Treatment plant and appropriate leaching fields.
And you meet every single week?
No, not every week.
Every other week.
Every two weeks.
And we've, we're not stopping. We are knocking down every door we can, but it's, it's not easy. We don't have the full cooperation of the town, unfortunately. We had a site picked out and the town definitely got cold feet and dropped their support of it. And that kind of left us, you know, in a bad position. But we.
I imagine that's, what's the acreage?
We need really a minimum of three acres.
We would have to treat, only for the business district, about 200,000 gallons a day. So, you know, it's a significant amount, but it's only for the business district that we're planning this first stage, which will really take care of a lot of the problems that you've described for Lake Agawam and Pond Lane. Not a great report, but that's reality.
And we continue to get drafts from our traffic consultants. In fact, I got another draft this afternoon on new ideas of how we can mitigate the traffic issues in the village of Southampton. So, I mean, we are working on this. I've spoken to supervisor, sorry, county executive Romaine. I was in Albany on February 3rd with the village attorney. We had meetings with Assemblyman Tommy John Scaboni, Senator Tony Palumbo, and we even got to meet the governor later that day. In every single conversation I had with all three of those people, I spoke about traffic. I didn't talk about historic preservation. I didn't talk about trees. I talked about traffic. So, sir, I, you, I can guarantee you, this is something that we are addressing all the time. It is not an easy situation to solve. There is a volume of cars coming through this part of the region that has become beyond what the roads can handle. So we need to figure out what we can do. I mean, the best solution probably is another alternative road built north of County Road 39. But you realize that's going to be years away. So we need to figure out what we can do here and now to try and get the traffic in our village under control. And we are doing that. I'm working very closely with the chief of police. That is one of the reasons why we needed to get another police officer brought on board so that we were not down an officer. That officer is going to help with tickets, especially in the western part of this village on Hill Street and on those turns, whether it be Somerset, Corrigan, Bishop's. That is exactly what we are focusing on. And she has been focusing on that diligently for the last several weeks. And we've seen a marked increase in the enforcement. But it's, that is why, again, it was essential, and I'm sorry Mr. Simeone couldn't vote for him, but it was essential to get another police officer on our police force. So that's why we did it. But thank you very much for your comments, sir.
And I will add one, one thing that we do have some success with, which is the first responders' lack of effective communication in times of crisis. And we are about to construct a much-needed cell tower to help their ability to communicate with each other and deal with emergencies. So it's not like we're not doing anything about these very critical issues.
Thank you. Sir?
It's been a long night. Good evening, everybody. Wayne Miller, Somerset Avenue. This is a safety issue, not a traffic issue. I want to set the record straight on some of the falsehoods that have been spoken by less, less than a handful of residents and continue to provide the facts of what has occurred over the last several years regarding the unsafe conditions on Somerset Avenue. The accident on December 3rd happened with a cut-through driver making a left from South McGee onto Somerset. But even there, the street is curved. It did not occur on a straightaway. How do I know? I walked up to the accident site right after it occurred and saw the spot where our neighbor was hit and rendered un. was hit and rendered unconscious. Somerset is curved and dangerous in other parts besides the two 90-degree curves. Chief Hurtow, she's not here, but she's had a long day. Chief Hurtow provided excellent data of the surge of increased citations and the eight major reported and verified incidents the last two years. Some residents have made it seem like this accident was the only reason for the one-way proposal and the need to take action now. It is not. It's the culmination of the last several years of increasing incidents, which occur at all times of the day, anywhere from early in the morning till late into the night. We heard the latest proposals the same time as everyone else. And by the way, who is more independent and unbiased than two traffic engineering firms and our own police chief? I commend Chief Hurtow for speaking up along with some of the other trustees who are now speaking up. And also, Ryan Winter from VHB has been working with the village since the middle of 2022, not recently engaged, like some have stated. We've added new bright warning signs, repainted double-yellow lines, lowered the speed limit, and added new stop signs. You do not install speed bumps on a curved road. They are only used on long, straight roads or in front of schools where you can see them coming. There is very good reason why you do not hear our traffic experts, Chief Hurtow, or our trustees recommending them for Somerset Avenue. The line of sight on Somerset is fully obstructed. Traffic calming measures do not work and cannot fix the layout of the street. The proposals are not to close this, close the street. It will still have plenty of northbound traffic. There is no increased safety risk to any of the residents of Bishop Pond in their enclosed private development. It's a slight change of where they'd be able to make a right turn, whether it be on Bishop or Corrigan. And their access to Route 39 for going west or east is closer than it is to Hill Street. They would still have many alternatives to go west, just one less. There should be no impact to Bishop Court or North Captain's Neck. The cut-through PN traffic flow now comes south on Bishop to make the right on South McGee. If properly enforced, the traffic should come around and back up onto 39 and be back, be back on its way. The trustees have provided ample time over two years to see if things would calm down on Somerset, but understandably, things have gotten worse as traffic continues all year round. The traffic engineers and our police chief are concluding the same thing after over two years of trial and error. The street is unsafe, and we need to significantly reduce the traffic on the street. Thank you again for your attention to this urgent matter. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Wayne. I, I will mention some of the things that were discussed with Assemblyman Scavoni and Senator Palumbo was to ask the state legislature and the governor to sign a law that will enable the village to use cameras for speeding and going, running through stop signs. We cannot do that unless we have state legislation to authorize that. I'm happy to report that after the meeting on February 3rd, both Tommy John Scavoni and Anthony Palumbo have agreed to initiate legislation in Albany, specifically for the villages of Southampton and the village of East Hampton. I was there with the village mayor of East Hampton, Jerry Larson, as well. And that they have said that they will put that through this year, and we are hoping that the governor will sign it before the end of the year. So if that, if we get that, I will be able to install speed cameras in other areas than just school zones. The only place that has that in, in the state of New York is New York City. So we, the villages of Southampton and East Hampton, they would have speed cameras in areas other than school zones, and also cameras that catch people who run stop signs, which will be a great enforcement tool, because once people realize they're there, they will not do it anymore, once they get a few tickets. So we, again, we are working on these, these issues. Unfortunately, government moves slowly, and it's going to take a whole calendar year of Albany legislation to get this approved. And I won't be able to do anything about it as long as it gets all approved by the assembly, the senate, and signed by the governor until, you know, the beginning of probably of 2026.
And it's going to be a battle, because Suffolk County, if you let their legislation land.
That's correct, and we discussed that.
And that's the county we oppose.
And we discussed that. And actually, I think on the stop sign cameras, we're actually joining with some villages in the county of Nassau.
Yeah.
To, to help us. So thank you very much for pointing that out, and, and that is what they are intending to do. So thank you. All right, do we have any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor Manger.
Yeah.
Spears Akaria, Somerset Avenue. And thank you again for the opportunity to address the board and for your thoughtful consideration on these issues. And I fully appreciate you're spending a lot of time and devoting a lot of energy and resources to traffic management in the village. We get it. Like Wayne, I'm here to really talk about the, the safety aspects. And I want to go back to something we discussed in the last meeting. 617 tickets for moving violations. Eight crashes. Four rollover crashes. Three vehicles on front lawns. One pedestrian struck. These are the statistics quoted at last month's Board of Trustee meeting here by the chief of police. These, these are not made-up statistics. These are real numbers that happened, the real rollover crashes on Somerset Avenue, four. Right? So allow me to quote another number. Thirty-two. Thirty-two homes. Imagine all of this taking place within the space of a 32-home subdivision. All of this intense activity in a very concentrated spot. These are real victims to these things, right? But the number 32 also means something else. It means a minority of village residents. And the way the safety issue has been framed as shifting burden from one area to another, I think neglects the fact that we're losing sight of the, we're losing sight of the gravity, right, of the situation that we're all facing here, right? Yes, there are traffic issues, but some areas are much more impacted by safety issues than others, because of the design of our streets, right? So you have a burning platform, and your chief Escobar or chief Polus, and you're the first to arrive on the scene of a single-family home engulfed in flames. We saw that happen very recently here in the village. And you tell your firefighters, "Hold off. I'll be putting this out. We're going to need to do an impact study on the water runoff for the foundation of the multifamily condominium next door," right? Or you tell them, "Use a garden hose," right? So that we don't impact the water pressure of the neighboring area, right? So that's, we know that's not what happens. We put out the fire. We save lives. That's our job, right? That's, our collective responsibility is to protect people. That's our primary responsibility, right? So this should no longer be about taking incremental, like additional actions to mitigate risk. I appreciate the speed camera. I think it's a great idea. I think we're past that, right? I don't see how speed cameras are going to rectify this issue, or stop sign cameras are going to rectify this issue. We have a fundamental design problem that speed cameras can't necessarily rectify. I'm not saying they wouldn't help, but again, a garden hose, in my view, right? I think what we need to do is we need to take, like, much more, a much, you know, more significant steps to actually eliminating risks, as the chief had proposed at last month's meeting. As Wayne mentioned, we've taken all the incremental steps. This is not new news. This has been happening for three years. And, you know, we've been here for three years with you all, having this conversation. And when people come in and say, "Wow, this is new news. We never heard of this," or "All this just started in December when someone got hit." I think you know what, what the facts are here. So I would also just finally add this speed bump thing, okay? Again, the U.S. Department of Transportation, and let's hope that one's not eliminated, you know, actually strongly discourages the placement of speed bumps or speed humps on curved roadways with limited sites. You know, any traffic engineer recommending that would be committing malpractice. So, you know, I appreciate the suggestions. Those of us who are experiencing these intensive and serious incidents, appreciate your efforts, but they're just not enough. And I just ask you to look at the numbers. Where do you see numbers like that? You know, in, on any heat map you would have, in any kind of environment, this would be flaming red, right? There's a lot of hyperbole about this. It's a very emotional issue for some people. The decision is really yours to make, and we're asking you to take decisive action, and hopefully as soon as you practically can. And I thank you again for your attention.
Thank you, Spears. Any one else wishing to speak this evening? I see Alan McFarlane back there. Alan? Do you want to say anything?
Not yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I just say?
Oh, sorry. Wayne.
Just a point about the, the speed cameras, when you said that to me.
Yeah.
Just, I want to kind of, that's going to be great for long stretches like Lee Avenue, those speed bumps, I hate them. Ox Bastard, you know, when we've had the traffic on Ox Park, that'd be awesome. It's not as much speeding on Somerset. When they come into these blind curves, you know, we have the speed limit down, down to 15, but if you're going 25, 30, and you don't know that street, and it's a wet street, it's not going to make a difference. But I think the speed cameras, the stop sign cameras are going to be great for the overall, the bigger, you know, the committee, for the overload of traffic. I just wanted to.
Okay, no, thank you, Wayne. Sage, is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak? No? Okay, well, should we close the public comment portion of this meeting? Yes? I'll make a motion to close the public comment portion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We will move to resolutions. Len, why don't you take the first one, please?
Number one, resolve the claims for the warrant dated February 13, 2025, totaling Warrant number.
I've been sitting here for two hours, and you just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I just, I just, I just asked if anyone wanted to speak.
Well, I didn't realize, are we going to go through the list of, of these correspondence from Nick Green?
Well, he, he, he mentioned them, and they're in the record. They're in the record, you know, filed in the record.
Should I, I'm sorry, I, I didn't understand what you're saying.
Yes, you can speak.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to, if you want to speak, so we'll reopen the public comment period here. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I sort of messed up on the procedure here. But I, I think that I'm consistent with, with sort of the, the themes that we heard today. It was very informative for me of, of traffic and, and even preservation and being green and all that. So what, as the letter said, that I, I received a violation notice about the clearance on a corner property. They want me to cut down the hedge. I live on a street that's very busy, meeting houses, you know. Experiences a lot of the challenges that we heard tonight. Speed, people not stopping at traffic signs, and.
Yeah.
And when I, I bought the property in 2004, 21 years ago, within months after we purchased it, my son was sitting in the, in the living room. We went out, and we came back, and we saw a big gaping hole into the hedge. And the car that drove into the hedge drove away. We reported to the police. It was very concerning that if the hedge wasn't there, that car would have been gone straight to the, to the living room where my son was sitting. Or somebody could have been in the backyard. And you could have, we heard about cars going into the backyards of people. So that was concerning. So there's a safety concern, and, and the hedge, thankfully, which was a mature hedge, about five feet wide, 30 feet tall, served the purpose. The, subsequent to that, I reported that to the police, but there was nothing that came out of it, because we never knew who did it. But subsequent to that, what I would find in the hedge, again, it's a busy street, is empty bottles of beer, empty bottles of alcoholic drinks, I mean, not, especially during the summer. That's, that's a comment that suggests to me that the risk is there, really hasn't gone away. Adding to that, out here, now we have, it's a four-way intersection, right? It's a, it's a, with, with really four stop signs. You would expect that cars would come to complete stop and cross. And when you come to complete stop, you have view of who's there, and they have a view of you, full view of you, regardless if the hedge is cut or not. I mean, you come to complete stop, you can see. The problem is that not every, everybody comes to a complete stop. Not everybody goes at a, at the speed limit. I can tell that by, sometimes by just hearing the cars that are going by. And, and that's another traffic problem that, that's not going to be, so it's not going to be addressed by cutting the hedge or the corner of the hedge. So when I was approached not too long ago by the ordinance official, asked to comply with, with the law that you're aware of, and to cut down the hedge to 30 inches, it just didn't feel right. And I, I think there's a, a bigger problem that we have that we need to address. This does not present a problem. The hedge does not present a problem of visibility. It, it protects against the safety and the erratic driving that we've seen. And so I, I've asked to present this to you and for you to consider not some exception or rethink about this, this code ordinance.
Okay, we can consider that.
I just, let me interrupt, please, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want you to know that Mayor Manger had directed me to look into the issue. I had to reach out to the, the various authorities, the chief building inspector, co-enforcement officer, and New York State Highway Law. I am going to reach out to you. We're going to sit down and have a discussion with what the findings are. I want to assure you, he had directed me to make sure that you were heard.
Thank you, thank you. I guess we can, we can take it offline then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel, please feel free to reach out to me at the office, and we'll schedule a time to sit down.
Sure, sure. Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gribas. Thank you for, for speaking. All right, so now I will call to close, make a motion to close the public comment period of this meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, now, Len, we're going to have to resolve.
Okay.
Go back to your resolution.
Number one, resolve the claims for the warrant dated February 13, 2025, totaling Warrant number A18, general fund. $711,330.13. Warrant number H9, capital fund. And $2,220. Warrant number T16, CS trust fund are audited and approved. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Two, resolve the reading of the minutes for the January 21, 2025 Board of Trustee meeting. Dispend accepted as filed by the village clerk, and the actions taken at those meetings are hereby ratified and approved. I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Number three, resolve the Board of Trustees accepts the fiscal year-end, May 31, 2024, audited financial statements as submitted from PKF O'Connor Davies LLP Auditor Services. I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We'll go to the village attorney for this.
Number four, this is, this is a resolution approving.
Long resolution.
Yeah, approving the 71 Hill Street special permit application. Whereas Section 116.5F of the Southampton Village Code authorizes a special permit for a mixed-use development in the village business district, which includes guest units for resort hotel use and dwelling units for workforce housing. And whereas 71 Hill Street LLC previously filed for and obtained a special permit for a mixed-use development in the village business district, which included guest units for resort hotel use and dwelling units for workforce housing. And whereas said previously issued special permit granted on April 20, 2021, approved plans that included up to 46 hotel suites for workforce housing units and for market-rate duplex housing units, as well as 6,001 square feet of commercial space and an outdoor swimming pool. And whereas the applicant subsequently submitted modified plans to some of the administrative boards. And whereas neither the originally approved plans nor the modified plans ever received the necessary approvals from the zoning board of appeals or the Board of Architectural Review and Historic Preservation. And whereas the applicant submitted new plans to the Board of Trustees for a special permit for a mixed-use development in the village business district, which included guest units for resort hotel use and dwelling units for workforce housing. And whereas the new plan provides for 40 hotel units, eight workforce units available for rent, and two workforce units for use by staff of the resort hotel use. And whereas an initial public hearing was held by the Village Board of Trustees on July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, at which time the plan was presented to the Board of Trustees and the public and to all persons either for or against said special permit were heard. And whereas the public hearing was kept open for a continued hearing on August eighth, twenty twenty-four, at which time the plan with some proposed revisions was again discussed with the Board of Trustees and the public and all persons either for or against the permit were heard and the record was then closed. And whereas thereafter, the Board of Trustees reopened the hearing for the purpose of receiving additional information, including floor plans from the applicant. And whereas the information submitted included a different version of the plan, such that the Board of Trustees determined that an additional hearing was warranted. And whereas thereafter, on December twelfth, twenty twenty-four, and January ninth, twenty twenty-five, additional hearings were held, at which time the plan was presented to the Board of Trustees and the public and all persons either for or against said special permit were heard. And whereas thereafter, on January ninth, twenty twenty-five, the hearing was closed. And whereas the Board of Trustees has considered the number of dwelling units to be provided for workforce housing use, the number of guest units to be provided for resort hotel use, the public benefit resulting from the provisions of the workforce housing, including the staff housing, and all other relevant factors. And whereas the Board has determined that, among other things, the following plan details were important factors in the approval and our requirements of this special permit. A, the plan provides for forty hotel guest rooms, which shall be restricted to a maximum occupancy of four adults. Consistent with Section one sixteen dash five F three of the Village Code, seasonal stays at the hotel shall be limited to a maximum of one hundred and twenty days. Resort hotel guest units shall not be the primary residence of any of the occupants. B, the plan provides for eight workforce housing units, each restricted to a maximum occupancy of two adults per bedroom, which shall comply with the Village Code and other Village requirements for workforce housing, but which shall include at a minimum verification of household income at or below one hundred and thirty percent of the area medium income for the Nassau Suffolk, MSA, as defined by HUD. Year-round leases for a duration of a maximum of two years and a minimum of one year for use as primary residence only, no subletting, and to the extent permitted by law, priority for employees of businesses located in the village and who are required to report to work outside of their residence within the village, and/or emergency service volunteers for the village. Further, there shall be a cap on the monthly rent equal to thirty percent of the maximum household monthly income. The workforce housing units shall each consist of a bedroom, a bathroom, a kitchen, and a living area, as shown on the floor plans dated December fourth, twenty twenty-four. Fifty percent of those units must be completely ADL, ADA compliant. C, the plan provides for an additional two housing units for use by staff employed by and working on-site of the hotel resort use. The staff restricted housing units, each shall consist of two bedrooms, maximum occupancy of two people per bedroom and four people per unit. Each unit shall have an ADA compliant bathroom. Each unit shall have use of an easily accessible kitchen to be shared by the occupants of the staff housing units. The staff housing, as described, shall be shown on updated floor plans to be submitted to the Board of Trustees within forty-five days of this resolution. The staff housing units must comply with zoning code requirements and any other applicable regulations as determined by the Building Inspector. D, the plan, as updated, shall provide for a minimum of fifty-seven parking spaces on the premises, two truck-loading spaces, and shall not reduce the availability of on-street parking spaces on Varadian Way. The parking spaces on the premises shall not be assigned to any particular user or tenant, but may be restricted to users of Seventy-One Hill, of the Seventy-One Hill Street complex and their guests. E, the plan provides for an outdoor swimming pool that will require a special exception, I'm sorry, which will require special exception approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals. To avoid the additional traffic, the sale of pool memberships would entail use of the swimming, shall be limited to hotels, okay, so use of the swimming pool shall be limited to hotel guests and their, hotel guests and their guests only. The Planning Board should address any potential noise impacts by requiring appropriate landscaping and screening. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the owner must record against the property in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk an agreement with the village setting forth the minimum terms of use of the workforce housing unit as set forth in paragraph B above. Such agreement shall set forth a requirement that the owner retain a qualified third-party consultant to assist in screening for the initial occupancy of any applicant for compliance with the workforce housing requirements. While the third-party consultant need not be named in the agreement, the owner shall name the screening consultant prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy. The owner applicant must recertify compliance on an annual basis by submitting a report with an affidavit from the owner verifying the tenant's compliance with the minimum requirements set forth in paragraph B. The village shall have the right to conduct an audit at the owner's expense to verify such compliance. Leases must require the tenant to cooperate with such audit. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a housing agreement that comports with this resolution, subject to the approval of the Village Attorney. G, the workforce housing units shall remain workforce housing units for a minimum of twenty years or the duration of the resort hotel use on the property, whichever is longer. H, the workforce housing units shall not be located in the basement, but rather on an above-ground floor of Building F. Staff housing units may be located in the lower level of the proposed hotel resort and shall comply with all applicable building code for egress. I, the plan maintains the two buildings which currently exist front on Hill Street and are labeled Building E and F respectfully. Consistent with the plan presented, the current certificate of occupancy for Building F shall terminate upon the issuance of building permits for this project and commencement of construction. In addition, the second floor of Building F, I'm sorry, Building E and the third floor of Building F will not be used for anything other than storage or mechanical. Any other use shall require approval from the Board of Trustees and any other appropriate agencies. J, all outdoor lighting on the premises must comply with the Village Code, currently Section one sixteen dash thirteen point one, and be approved by the Board of Architectural Review and Historic Preservation. K, there shall be no music permitted outdoors on the premises, including live music and amplified music with sound speakers. L, this approval is subject to the applicants providing cross-access for two-way vehicular traffic by a recorded easement to forty-three Hill Street and cross-access for pedestrian traffic by a recorded easement to fifty-one Hill Street. The location of those cross accesses shall be located by the applicant and the Village of Southampton Planning Board during the site plan review process and must be consistent with the Village Code. M, ultimate site plan approval must be consistent with the plan submitted to the Board of Trustees dated December fourth, twenty twenty-four, as updated to include the items set forth and approved herein. N, any prior special permit approvals for this property, Seventy-One Hill Street, are hereby superseded and terminated by this approval. And whereas the applicant prepared an environmental assessment form, Part One, dated December thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, revised January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, and further revised on November fourth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas by resolution on October tenth, twenty twenty-four, Resolution number twenty twenty-four six five three, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Southampton determined that the approval of this special permit is considered an unlisted action under Sixth New York Code of Rules and Regulations, Part six one seven point five C twenty-two of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, identified the involved agencies, declared lead agency status, and authorized the Planning Director to initiate coordinated review. And whereas BFJ Planning, on behalf of the Village, prepared a full environmental assessment form, Part Two, dated December, I'm sorry, dated January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, which identified no or small impacts may occur, and a draft full EAF form, Part Three, dated January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, which recommends there would be no significant adverse impacts on the environment. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees issues a negative declaration pursuant to secret as there are no significant negative environmental impacts anticipated by approval of this special permit use, and be it further resolved that the Village Board of Trustees conditionally approves a special permit for a workforce housing resort hotel mixed-use development as described herein, subject to the updated plans being submitted to the Village within forty-five days of this approval. And be it resolved that this special permit shall expire three years from the date of approval unless a building permit is issued. The Board of Trustees in its sole discretion may grant extensions for good cause. That is your motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I will make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I would like to say that this has been quite a marathon to get to this point here tonight. A lot of back and forth, and I want to appreciate the efforts made by the applicant, as well as the Village, the Village Attorney specifically, on working out this agreement. It does meet with all the requirements that I, as the mayor, think are correct for this development in the Village, and I am happy to make the motion and I will be voting in the affirmative for this. But at this time, is there anyone else who would like to discuss this? All right, well, then we have...
I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I think it's an exciting new initiative for the Village, and what I appreciate especially is the provision of eight workforce housing units that we desperately need. So thank you.
And this is, this is definitely a better product than had been approved back in twenty twenty-one. So much work has gone into this and really the Village thanks again the applicant for working so diligently with us and the architect, new architect on this project. So at this point, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
You're voting no? Okay. Well, it passed, so you guys have authority to go to the workforce, I mean, the land use boards. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, guys.
All right, we'll continue with Resolution five.
Number five, resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves with respect to the twenty twenty-five Village general election and in accordance with the Village Code, Chapter six dash one, the election will be held on Friday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-five. The polling place will be located at the Levittas Center, Southampton Cultural Center, located at twenty-five Pond Lane, Southampton, New York. The polls will be open for the timeframe as follows, nine AM to nine PM. The following office will be filled for Village Mayor, one position, and the term of office is two years, current incumbent William M. Manger, Jr. The following offices will be filled for Village Trustee, two positions, and the term of office for both positions is two years, current incumbent Robin Brown, current incumbent Roy Stevenson. I'll make the motion and I'll ask for a second.
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Whereas the Police Department is requesting a new traffic control vehicle with a license plate reader, and whereas the Village has secured quotes off the state contract for said vehicle at a cost not to exceed forty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars and fourteen cents, and the license plate reader at a cost not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby approves a purchase for a new traffic control vehicle and a license plate reader at a cost not to exceed sixty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars and fourteen cents, to be paid for by Capital Reserve, subject to permissive referendum. I will make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Whereas the Board of Trustees previously approved and authorized a contract with AECOM for the design and permitting work, Task One or Task I, associated with the proposed Augie Harvester Project at Lake Agawam. And whereas AECOM is in the final stages of permitting process with the New York State, the DEC, and whereas additional work is required that was to be charged against the full contract price, and whereas the Village has agreed to increase the cost of the initial contract for the design and permitting work with an equal offset on the full contract, now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor to execute the change order increasing the Task I contract price by twenty-five thousand dollars, to be paid from Water Quality Capital Reserve or reimbursed by grant funding sources. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Whereas the Village has secured a proposal for professional services from LK McLean Associates Engineering and Surveying to provide surveying, engineering, design, and permitting services for additional bioswells at Old Town Pond. Now there, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves proposal for LKMA at a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand, to be paid from the Water Quality Capital Reserve. Do I have a motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas St. Andrews Firehouse, Station Three, southwest-facing Apparatus Bay, has structural floor damage on the elevated composite steel deck due to water infiltration between the outside apron and the interior slab, of which said slab on the interior Apparatus Bay has settled about one inch and is unsafe to drive on and park fire apparatus equipment. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees has recognized the need for an engineer to perform structural engineering services, and whereas the Village has received a proposal from H two M Architects and Engineers at a cost not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby appoints H two M Architecture and Engineers to perform the structural engineering service for St. Andrews Firehouse, and hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the proposal, subject to approval as to form by the Village Attorney, at a cost not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars, to be paid for by trustee's special projects. So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Resolved, at the request of the Senior Building Inspector, the Board of Trustees approves the release of the performance bond posted for RJ Punnett, two hundred and twenty Hampton Road, Southampton, for site plan work completed in the amount of ten thousand dollars plus interest accrued. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolved at the request of the Senior Building Inspector, the Board of Trustees approves the release of the performance bond posted for Pecanic Land Trust Incorporated, two ninety-six Hampton Road, Southampton, for site plan work completed in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars plus interest accrued. I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolved, the request of the Senior Building Inspector, the Board of Trustees approves the release of the performance bond posted for Pep Two Holding LLC, two hundred David White's Lane, Southampton, for site plan work completed in the amount of seven thousand dollars plus interest accrued. I'll make the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolved, at the request of the Senior Building Inspector, the Board of Trustees approves the release of the performance bond posted for Beachwood Blatch LLC, one oh one Hill Street, Southampton, for the site plan work completed in the amount of nineteen thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars plus interest accrued. Do I have a motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolved, at the request of the Senior Building Inspector, the Board of Trustees approves the release of the performance bond posted by Twelve Forty Meadow Lane LLC, twelve forty Meadow Lane, Southampton, for site plan work completed in the amount of twenty thousand dollars plus interest accrued. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Scott?
Resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the Village Attorney and the Village Assessor to enter into a stipulation to settle an Article seven tax lien litigation between the Village and Capital One related to property located at Thirty Jobs Lane, Southampton, New York, and further identified as Suffolk County Tax Map Number zero nine zero four dash block six, lot two, dot zero one six. Said settlement reduces the annual assessed value by the amount of six thousand seven hundred and fifty for tax years two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and thirteen thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars for tax years two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen through two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. And sixteen thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars tax years two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, at a total cost to the Village of twenty-five thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents, as identified in the proposed stipulation negotiated between the Village Assessor, Cronin Cronin Law Firm, and Attorneys for Capital One.
I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees accepts the resignation of Southampton Village Fire Department, Agawam Hose Company Member Benjamin Reister, with ten point six years of service effective January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees expects the resignation of Southampton Village Fire Department, Hook and Ladder Company One, Member Lachlan Desane, with point nine two years of service effective January seventh, twenty twenty-five. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolved.
I just would like to thank them for their service. Volunteers are always hard to find and appreciate the time that they put in for our Village Fire Department.
Thank you. Hoven?
Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the day to host our thirteenth annual Southampton Fest on Friday, October third, twenty twenty-five, to Sunday, October fifth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the twenty twenty-five Southampton Chamber Commerce Events enlisted, Sundays, May fourth through August thirty-first, Farmers and Artisan Market held at Agawam Park from nine AM to three PM. 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Wednesday, October 1st, Paint the Town Pink and Kick Off Breast Cancer Awareness Month Tree Lighting Ceremony held at the front entrance of the Southampton Chamber Office at 6:30 p.m. Saturday, November 29th, 28th Annual Fire Truck Parade of Lights, held in conjunction with the Southampton Fire Department commencing at dark at 4:45 p.m. This event is also in conjunction with the Christmas Decorating Committee Tree Lighting Ceremony and fireworks display at Agawam Park at 5:15 p.m. Saturday, December 6th, Southampton is a wonderful village, consists of all-day events to shop, dine, and stroll Southampton Village. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. I do have one walk-on resolution concerning ocean rescue. I'll make a motion to add this walk-on. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the resolution is as follows. Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the Southampton Village Ocean Rescue to host cold-water immersion training held at Town Point Beach, Town Point Beach, Southampton, from January 1st, 2025, to April 30th, 2025, on Wednesday evenings at 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. I will make the motion.
Second.
Discussion, so this was something that the village administrator worked out with. They will have appropriate insurance necessary to cover the village for this event being held outside of the village boundaries. This is something, I understand, they did last year, and so they wanted to continue it this, this winter and spring. So, we have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we will go to, I think, comments from board members, and we will start with Trustee Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a long evening, we're productive, so I'm going to keep mine short and sweet. First, I'd like to thank everyone that attended this meeting for the wonderful ideas, and I encourage you again, please, to submit your ideas so that we can put them together and reevaluate and see how we can go forward. And this being the month of love, February, I want to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day, and also, I want to say a special welcome, and we're so happy that this weekend, the Playhouse will be opening. We're grateful that they kept our beautiful historic building and that the Playhouse is open this weekend. We, we really did it quite well, I would say, Mr. Mayor, with that. We not just have a cinema, but there's so many other qualities that they'll be having as far as a program that will be happening, and three different types of cinemas. So, we welcome them, and I encourage everyone out to enjoy the Playhouse. Once again, have a lovely holiday.
All right, we'll go to, thank you, Trustee Brown. We'll go to Trustee Simeoni.
Yes, a very short, I just want to thank all the people that came forward tonight to express their opinions for the proposals that were made, and, and also, happy Valentine's.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Simeoni. We'll go to Trustee Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, a long meeting, but to my mind, one of the best we've had in a while. It's so heartening to have the community gather and express their opinions and do it in such a civil way. That's how we can make better decisions, is getting the input from all of our residents. And some of the decisions are hard to come to and are never going to make everybody happy, but this is the process that helps us do it the best we possibly can. So, I appreciate all the people coming out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Stevenson, we'll go to Trustee Zananti.
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to the village financial news, the budget preparation meetings for the fiscal year that begins June 1st have started with the department heads, the mayor, the treasurer, the village administrator, and the appropriate trustee liaisons, as well as the active involvement of the Budget and Finance Committee attending each of the meetings. Also, as we saw tonight, the audited results show another financially sound year for the village. The operating budget revenues and expenses are very much in line with our conservative methods and assumptions. In the last year, as the auditors noted, the operating surplus allowed us to transfer funds to the capital budget, which we are using to fix our physical assets and to deal with our deferred maintenance issues. And in the spirit of brevity, I will also say that it was a treat to see the Southampton High School production of Mean Girls over the last weekend. The acting, the choreography, and the singing were impressive and very endearing. A special impressive part of the production was the incredible playing of the student orchestra. It was a very well-done and very well-received by the audience, and I wish everyone a good night.
Thank you, Trustee Zananti. I would just like to say that for the second year in a row, we've had a sculpture by local artist James Ding on display at the art center next door on their property, or our property that we leased to the art center, and it is just again in time for Valentine's Day tomorrow. It's this time a heart, and people have been commenting it on social media, and I encourage everybody to go by and take a look at it and maybe do an Instagram moment. I would like to also say that the fire department has been very busy, and if you would indulge me, I would like to read the recap of the fire call that happened on Wickapog Road last Friday at approximately 12:35 p.m. The Southampton Fire Department was dispatched to a home on Wickapog Road for a reported residential structural fire. Second Assistant Chief Kenneth Lockhart was first to arrive on scene in two minutes and confirmed a working fire. Fire Department crews had the fire under control within twenty minutes and continued checking for extension and conducted salvage and overhaul. Fire police had a portion of Wickapog Road closed for the duration of the call. Chief of Department Polis Walker was the incident commander and in charge of the scene, and First Assistant Chief Richard Fowler and Second Assistant Chief Kenneth Lockhart oversaw the fire operations. Southampton Fire Department had three engines, two tower ladders, one rescue truck, two fire police trucks, and several support vehicles on scene, as well as three chiefs and four captains. There were no reported injuries, and Southampton Village Volunteer Ambulance was on scene to provide firefighter rehab and support under the direction of Chief Christopher Epley and First Assistant Chief Matthew Zakoski. Additional agencies were on scene, including North Sea Fire Department, Hampton Bay's Fire Department, Rapid Intervention Teams from Sag Harbor Fire Department, and East Hampton Fire Department, Southampton Village Police Department, Southampton Volunteer Ambulance, Suffolk County Deputy Fire Coordinator, as well as the Bridgehampton Fire Department, who stood by at Southampton's Firehouse to cover any additional alarms that could have occurred during the incident. There were approximately eighty-five fire and EMS volunteer personnel on scene. The cause did not appear to be suspicious, and the scene was turned over to the Southampton Village Fire Marshal for investigation at approximately 2:30 p.m. So, I would just like to thank them for all they do. I'm sorry. But you're amazing.
Here, here is right.
Yes.
Anyway, I spoke about the meetings in opening with the East Hampton Village Mayor Larson and the Chief of Police from East Hampton Village, that I attended with Eileen Powers. As I said, we met with Tommy John Scavoni, our Assemblyman, Senator Anthony Palumbo, and got to speak to Governor Kathy Hochul later that night at the Executive Mansion. In all cases, we discussed traffic and what we can do to mitigate it. I then also met on February 6th with Ann Welker, where traffic was other, another topic, and the involvement of, obviously, the county is, is very important. I would like to also say that, yes, we are looking forward to the opening of the Southampton Theater this weekend. I do know that on Saturday, they're going to be showing Captain America in IMAX and Paddington in Peru. So, anyone is interested, please check out the listings. This will be a soft opening. They only have two of the theaters open at this point. They will have all four open by Memorial Day, is my understanding. And then I would also finally like to announce that on October 3rd, 4th, and 5th, the first week in October, we will have Southampton Fest 2025. October 3rd will be the kickoff. October 4th will be the main events, and October 5th will be held as a rain date. So, that is a lot of things to look forward to, and again, I think at this point, it's been a long meeting, and I think I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you all very much.